All right, I believe we can get started. We're going to call to order the May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole. And our first item of business this evening is to consider a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole Meeting of April eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve it. Second, I'll do all three.
There's a motion to approve in a second. Any comments or questions from commissioners about the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are approved. This evening, we do have a presentation, and I'm going to turn this over to Manager Man Freddie for a brief presentation about zoning ordinance amendment and land use process.
Thank you, Vice President Hecker. This will not be a very long presentation, but given the questions that seem to have been arising regarding the number of text amendments that have been received by the township or that are forthcoming to the township, and some of the concerns that commissioners have addressed to the point of Commissioner Rothman seeking clarification specifically about the process. Commissioner Carswell wanted to make sure that we had some clear documents that can explain the process. So what we did was we took what we already had, codified it, and made it into some very simple readable processes and flow charts so that everyone can understand how the process is and how really the process that the Board of Commissioners has put in place expands public participation even prior to their considering whether or not they'll even hear the text amendment to move it forward. And in both cases of what we have right now, we want to make sure that that's very clear because candidly, prior to the new rules with the Committee of the Whole where there's literally an additional thirty days for public comment because it starts the process thirty days sooner, and then you have the option of going to committees or to the number of options. I just wanted to run through those in this very brief process. So the zoning ordinance text and/or map amendment process really begins oftentimes before there's any formal consideration by the board, as is evidenced by the Willow Grove Park Mall request for a zoning text amendment and some others that will soon be coming. We already know there's been discussions about Penn State because they've begun having neighbor meetings. So ward commissioners have traditionally, whenever an applicant has wanted to ask to have, and it's important that we understand that it's a request to amend the township zoning ordinance. It's not a requirement that it be done. But ward commissioners have traditionally, long before this board was convened, long before the solicitor or I were here, have asked for neighbor meetings so that the neighbors can have an opportunity to to talk with their residents and the applicant that's proposing some sort of a development. So before that property owner even has an opportunity to begin, they make a formal request to my office for zoning text or zoning map amendment. The ward commissioner is immediately contacted. The request is referred to the solicitor, the ward commissioner, the Board of Commissioners, and we may schedule the matter for a public meeting. What typically happens is that the ward commissioner will tell anyone who's interested, you need to begin by talking to the neighbors. You need to begin by going out in the community and then perhaps will consider, depending on what feedback you get, as to whether or not we want to move this forward into the formal process. In the case of the Willow Grove Park Mall, this is one of the reasons that Commissioner Carswell, as well as Commissioner Vaughn and Commissioner Myers, had talked about making sure we're making the process clear is because it was immediately said to begin reaching out to the neighbors before we'll even consider the text amendment as an official agenda item. So that did happen. The same thing happened with Penn State. As you'll notice, Penn State University has not even made their formal submission or presentation to the Board of Commissioners to make their ask. And what has then happened is they have been told that you go to the neighbors, you go to the planning commission. In the case of Willow Grove Park Mall, when it came to the board, the board said, we will only consider this once you've got to the neighbors and then go on to the planning commission to have their input. I believe one commenter earlier this evening mentioned six meetings. There were, I believe, at least two neighbor meetings, and in four meetings that the planning commission spent a great deal of time. And incidentally, just so everyone understands, the planning commission at the last meeting went through it all. The planning commission is going to have, as part of this process, another meeting on the twenty-seventh where they're going to very specifically take a look at all the things that they talked about in those four meetings so that they can make specific recommendations when they send it back to the board, which will most likely get scheduled for June. When that comes back to the Board of Commissioners in June, to the Committee of the Whole, that will be the first time that they will actually be considering the context and content of the requested amendment because they wanted the public input not only in the neighbor setting, but also at the planning commission because the planning commission plays an important role in reviewing and making recommendations. So by the time they've actually taken even the first formal consideration of the map or text amendment, there will have been much public input and public comment, including by the planning agency of the township, in this case, the planning commission. So once that happens, Ward Commissioners Committee of the Whole will consider the requested amendment. And as you'll note on the flow chart, there's a note down at the bottom, and it says, please note, the Board of Commissioners may determine other processes or outcomes prior to acting upon a zoning amendment request. And the reason that is, is because this is the township zoning ordinance. The Board of Commissioners understands that this is a request that they must take seriously because someone is asking to amend an existing ordinance. And in the case of the township's ordinance, one, a lot of time was spent that was recently adopted. So the text and the map have to be very carefully considered, especially in light of the fact, as Commissioner Thompson mentioned, that we are taking a look at the comprehensive plan. So we're also in a process of revising the zoning and land development ordinances, the comprehensive plan, which will help for the future while we're considering the existing ordinance and these formal requests. And if anyone asks, why are these requests being made? Because property owners have a right to petition their government for use of their property. But the Board of Commissioners, recognizing that they have that right, also recognizes that they have to preserve the integrity and quality of life of the township, which is why you, as a Board of Commissioners, have taken such great steps to make sure that there are numerous steps in the process. So by the time it comes back to the Committee of the Whole with that requested amendment, and as I mentioned, it can also change a great flexibility in dealing with requests for text and map amendments. There are a number of steps and a number of options that you can consider. And you'll notice on the chart, there are dotted, in this case because it's rather small, but there are hashed and dotted lines that says it can go back and forth. The Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole can send it for a neighbor meeting. They can say, after your neighbor meeting, come back to us. They can send it to an information session and say, after the information session, come back to us. The planning commission, the land use committee, or the Board of Commissioners can say, in rare cases, we'd like you to go directly to the next board meeting. They can have any combination of any of these options available to. When I say they, I mean you, the Board of Commissioners, has any one of these or all of these as options that you can select for whatever process you'd like to garner as much public input as you would like before you even consider the ordinance. Once you consider that ordinance, whether it goes directly to an information session and back, as you could see to the far right, back down to the Board of Commissioners for consideration of that ordinance, at that point, there is another public meeting, and there is more input. We had a good question today that came through Commissioner Rothman. And I want to make sure I draw this point because it was a great question. The question was asked, if it goes to the Board Commissioners Committee of the Whole and that request is considered, by this chart, it looks like those other steps may not be followed. Again, every one of these is an option the board has to consider on its merits in each case. But in the case of, should the board want it to go directly to the Board of Commissioners, it would still be another public meeting for another opportunity for public comment. And if they would decide to move forward with that text or map amendment, that would simply be authorizing the ordinance to be drafted. And once that ordinance is drafted, there's a specific public hearing on that text or map amendment. So there are numerous opportunities for the public, as you've seen throughout this current process with the mall, numerous opportunities for the public before you even consider it at your Committee of the Whole again. And if it gets rejected, it moves no further. If you would approve it at any one of these public information forums, it would then come back to the Committee of the Whole. The Committee of the Whole would move it to the Board of Commissioners, and then the Board of Commissioners would decide to authorize the solicitor to draft and approve that, which would then be a public hearing. The other important piece to this to note is this is just an amendment to the zoning ordinance. That doesn't mean it's approved. There is the whole process of land development. As you can see, the land development process then begins. If it's approved after all of that, the land development process begins. And I'm sure Ms. McIlveagh will take me to the process. This is a document, and this has been in place for nearly four years, if not more than a full four years. It's called a land use guidance document so that anyone who has a question on subdivision of land development, there's a very clear process with the timeline as to what the steps are if you want to move through that process. So in the case of text amendments, it's a whole process to begin with before you even get to the next process, which is subdivision and land development, which are technically two processes in one, the way this rolls out. And as you can see, the first piece of it is zoning determination. And that's to determine if there are variances, special exceptions, or conditional uses. So text and map amendments is only one piece of the puzzle. The zoning officer reviews every application to make sure it complies with the zoning ordinance. If it doesn't comply with the zoning ordinance, it has to go to the zoning hearing board, or at least shouldn't say has to, but an applicant has the ability to request that it goes to the zoning hearing board. They can go simultaneously, and oftentimes they don't. A lot of times applicants will wait for that to go to through the zoning process before they come in. They have an option for immediate detachment professionals. And here's another point that's important, something that we began approximately four years ago. The meeting with the attachment professionals, if an applicant requests that, they're paying for that. It's not coming out of township tax dollars. It's the applicant, if they want a request so they can make sure they're complying with everything, will often honor that, they'll post money for that, and they will pay for that. And the purpose of that is to make sure that it's a complete application and that they've done everything that we're requiring them to do. We actually take the step of making sure that the application is complete with a completeness review and checklist. Then there is a number of reviews, planning, zoning, engineering, legal, and the advisory boards. In the last few months, we've really started engaging the EAC and the Shade Tree Commission so they become more of a process. Now, we're going through some growing pains because it is new. We actually had a meeting not that long ago with the planning commission, Shade Tree, and the EAC to make sure we align our timing. For example, the Shade Tree Commission is actually going to change their meeting date so there's more time for them to do their reviews and get it into the system and get into the process. Then the public information sessions will begin, if applicable, will begin happening. And you can see a whole section on public and community meetings. You have the public information sessions. You have the planning commission, again, that recommends, makes revisions and returns approvals. There's notes, they're not going to insult your intelligence with that. Then, of course, we have the Board of Commissioners, and I think that's my dog in the background. The Board of Commissioners, who has the board committees, we have a committee of the whole, which adds another thirty period of time for review, to discuss, review, and recommend. And the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, where they would either approve or deny. So you can see there's a very lengthy, detailed public process for everyone that have an opportunity to comment and for every property owner to have the ability to make a request of detachment to use their land, either as it is often called by right under the ordinances, or if there's some changes needed, where they can make requests for variances or changes, they could do so. The land development, the land use guidance document is very voluminous. It's very large, it's very detailed, and it's very clear. So anyone who wants to learn more, they can go to this. And these are all on the website. And as you can see, this will take you right to it. Abingtonpa.gov, public info. That is a very brief synopsis of the land use process, zoning text amendment, as well as our formal process for subdivision of land development.
Thank you, Manager Man Freddie. I think that was.
Questions, I know it's just a presentation. Commissioners, have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah. We can either do that, or we can encourage them to follow up individually as well. Okay. Thank you. So now we will move to the portion of the meeting where we will open it up for public comment on the agenda items on this evening's agenda. And we will start with the first hand that is raised. If you could let Ms. Lehman in. And I will remind folks, before we begin, the public comment period during the Committee of the Whole is up to five minutes to speak on matters that are on the agenda. And that's how we'll proceed. So please, you can unmute Ms. Lehman.
So first of all, I have asked you, Commissioner Hecker, and I asked all the commissioners to please put the new speaking rules, recognizing that these rules are completely unfair, and to put the new speaking rules into place right away and use them at this meeting so that we had three minutes on each agenda item. It's sad that you wouldn't do that. It's very sad. We, and jamming these two meetings together is also sad. You know, we used to have, literally Tuesday and Thursday, we used to have two meetings a night of the committee meetings, and then it came to the board with all the things worked out. You are literally working everything out on the same night that you have a board meeting with every other issue. This is just not okay. It's so disrespectful to the residents of this township. So the presentation that was, I want to add one more thing. Mr. Brodsky playing music in the middle. When all of you were there and we could have had open mic discussions to answer people's questions, when you had this many questions or people waiting on the line to talk to commissioners and so little time to talk. Please use your breaks to answer questions for.
Ms. Lehman, I'm going to urge you to get to the agenda items. Thank you.
I know. So the process that Mr. Man Freddie just discussed, the text amendment process, it is absolutely no process at all. There is absolutely nothing clear, as he even admitted here, but I don't think anybody caught it. You'd have to look at it. There's an arrow from every box to every box, which means that you can do whatever you want to do. And it was presented as a plan to make things understandable. It's not understandable at all. You literally at every meeting can decide to do whatever you want. You can have a meeting with neighbors or not have a meeting with neighbors. It is unconscionable that you would try and sell this as a plan that actually made things clear. What it makes clear is that you're not going to be held to any plan. You're going to do what you want to do. And the other thing in there is that the residents' meetings, they did not want to have a meeting at the beginning where, as the Willow Grove Mall, they took them on the history of shopping and then showed them one building. That had nothing to do with what they were submitting. First, the person, the applicant should submit it. Then they should have a meeting with the residents where the residents can actually ask all the questions that they have about what's been submitted. This, what Mr. Man Freddie described tonight was perverted in a dozen ways and absolutely is not in the interests of the residents of this township. I know many of them don't understand it, but I've been doing this for fifteen years, and this is disgusting. This is the most disgusting that it's gotten in this township. The rental inspection ordinance, you are actually having people go out to inspect properties for the Uniform Construction Code and the Fire Code that have absolutely no training or ability to do that. And when you had people who had training, like at the Colonnade, it was a complete mess. They turned their head when they wanted to turn their head, and people were left in dangerous conditions while other people were actually forced to follow rules to the T. It is absolutely not something this township should be doing. Tenants need to be helped. I offered you a way that tenants can be helped without the liability and the costs. This is a money grab and nothing more, and actually dangerous because it can set up a way for people to pay under the table and have their things ignored. That, and that had to be what was happening at the Colonnade. I can't even imagine that people would be left in those conditions without some monstrous incentive. Okay, Penn State, Mr. Man Freddie just said, had begun having neighboring meetings and was going to submit something. What? They submitted it already. And the neighbor meeting.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Lehman.
The neighbor meetings should have to do with the zoning ordinance that was submitted. How would he say it hasn't been submitted? The neighbor meetings need to be focused on what was submitted. And then the process needs to be clarified so that everybody gets the same reviews and the committee meetings can't be skipped over. This, what's going on in this township is deception on every level. Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Lehman, for your comments. Your time is up. Mr. Man Freddie, did you have something you wanted to say before I move on to additional public comment?
Very quickly, the commenter is certainly entitled to her opinion on what the process should be or what, in her case, she believes it should be. But to characterize the Board of Commissioners as having numerous options for public input after there's already been neighbor meetings as not being open to the public. I mean, this evening, we're late getting to this because the Board of Commissioners was thoughtful in hearing every public commenter at this meeting. And not only being thoughtful, in many cases, already engaged in working with those residents. So this notion that this is meant to be deceptive, or I won't frankly, I don't want to use the word that was used here, but I will say, there's no disrespect intended. We're actually working very hard. And I know you are because you drive a lot of this, had greater public comment and participation.
Thank you, Manager Man Freddie. Could we let in Andre Del Valle?
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to testify this evening on the following legislation, which would establish a residential rental license permit. My name is Andre Del Valle. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the Pennsylvania Apartment Association. We are a statewide organization representing apartment owners, managing companies and their industry suppliers, representing three thousand two hundred and eighty-eight units here in Abington Township. I'd like to start off my testimony by thanking the Commissioners for all they have done for the residents of Abington Township as we all continue to navigate these unprecedented times that we're living in. Over the last year, the Pennsylvania Apartment Association has worked with federal, state, and local elected officials through a number of policies, including the Federal Eviction Moratorium, Rental Assistance Program, and other pieces of legislation that keeps residents in their homes while ensuring that landlords, especially small landlords, receive much-needed financial assistance for their mortgage payments, which had gone into arrears due to non-payment of rent. Although we may not have agreed with all these policies, this cross-collaboration allowed us to find a middle ground that assisted both tenants and landlords. We understand that legislation is drafted to regulate bad actors, not hurt the good ones. However, Ezra, and we believe that this legislation has unintended consequences that would hurt both landlords and tenants. We have shared some of our concerns in a letter with the Commissioners, but would like to highlight some of those today. Given that we are living through the COVID- nineteen pandemic and this legislation mandates in-person biannual inspections, we believe this puts both inspectors and tenants at risk of spreading the virus and, as data has shown, could continue to negatively impact our BIPOC communities who have been hit the hardest by the COVID- nineteen virus. There are also a number of components of this legislation that we believe could be deemed illegal or even unconstitutional, including mandating that an owner provide the township with a list of tenants, which would include the full legal name, address, emergency contact, earning income tax form, or an affidavit attesting that the tenant is not employed. This could be a violation of the Fair Housing Act, given that there is no longer an assumption of privacy and could lead to discrimination based on non-employment and housing instability for a tenant. The legislation also states that the township has the right to revoke the rental property license if it is determined that the property is a nuisance. One of the most concerning parts of this ordinance is that it allows for the revocation of the license based on vicarious liability. If the tenant engages in conduct set forth into ordinance, none of which that the owner has any control over, the owner of the property could have the rental property license revoked with an inability to renew the license for at least three years. We urge you to please consider the concerns that we have expressed, not only in testimony today, but in the letter which was sent over to the Commissioners. We appreciate the spirit of this legislation and would welcome the opportunity to work with the bill sponsor in the drafting of this legislation to ensure that both good landlords and good tenants are safe in their homes at a time when residents are still trying to get back on their feet. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Del Valle. Appreciate you coming out to make those comments this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to Patrick Kucharsky.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, if you could just state your name, well, we know your name and your address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Patrick Kucharsky. I live at six oh one Monroe Avenue in Artsley, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
My public comment is in regard to advertising an ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter one oh five of Massage Establishments. I'm grateful that this is on the agenda this evening because we actually need an ordinance that is finally able to be enforced. I've been absolutely confused with the different answers I've received from law enforcement and local legislators. Is, has there been an ordinance that has been able to be enforced or not? Is it unconstitutional or not? I've been absolutely confused in that regard. I live about twenty feet from an illicit massage parlor. I'm going to call it what it is. We moved here in the spring of two thousand and twenty, and because of COVID restrictions in the area, we were, the facility itself was closed down. So we were under the impression, actually, that it was no longer in business. We had a rude awakening in the summer of two thousand and twenty when they did reopen. And sadly, my Lord, it has been a nightmare for my family and I. We have lost so much sleep. The emotional distress that we have gone through and the things that we have witnessed is, it's mind-boggling. Late afternoon, after hours, men slipping in and out of this establishment in the midnight hours. I started picking up a pattern of men parking ten blocks away as far as CVS. I actually watched a man walk all the way to Old York Road from over here. It was a forty-minute walk for a fifteen-minute massage. That's another thing I started picking up. Ten, twelve, fifteen-minute massages. That does not look like a massage. I have to be quite honest. This is long overdue, and you have, let's be honest, tonight should be kind of a boring night. We should just be talking about zoning things in regard to traffic lights and buildings and things like this. Me, as a citizen, shouldn't have to throw myself out here and just kind of plead with you all to please set an ordinance that can be enforced. I have little kids that are absolutely scared. We have, we have little kids in this neighborhood that are afraid. Tonight, the establishment across the street was closed down. Now we're going to have men come into this neighborhood who are not going to get serviced. How far would their deep dark sin bring them? We need something that will be established once and for all. Again, I just want to let you all know, I've had men who actually have admitted to me what goes on in there. And I have picked up patterns of men showing up for twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen minutes. Men who park far away, men who walk in with hoods on and slip out, men who walk behind the alley to come in after late midnight hours. And again, another thing I want to actually point out, I started picking up patterns of women getting dropped off in New York City cabs with luggage and comforters. There was a point in the summer last year, I used to see women get shuffled out of the establishment into vans. Who are they? I don't even know who they are, no longer to be seen. Clearly signs of some type of human trafficking. Please, I plead with you, let's get something established once and for all for the safety of our kids, for the safety of our women in the neighborhood, for the safety of these women who are caught up in this debt type of bondage. I'm an irate father. We moved here to Abington Township because it was advertised as one of the best towns to live in in Pennsylvania. It was voted as one of the greater towns in this country, and that has not been our experience. It has been absolutely, we regret moving here, I have to say. It's very sad. We regret. It has been absolutely, we regret moving here, I have to say. It's very sad. We regret. I've called the police so many times, and oftentimes, I'm told there is nothing to be enforced. There's nothing that they could, can enforce right now. We need an ordinance that can be enforced once and for all. Please, I beg you. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Kucharsky. I appreciate you taking the time to come out this evening to share your perspective and your experience. And we definitely want to support you and your neighbors in putting something together that is workable. So thank you for coming out. We will now ask Carrie, if we can move her into the meeting, and if you could give us your full name and address for the record, please.
Yes, hi, I'm Karen Milovich. I'm at five two nine Berkeley Avenue.
Thank you.
I know we're talking about zoning, and I know this has been discussed before, but we live right across the street from the Huntington Valley Shopping Center, and without the neighbor's knowledge, it was rezoned for foot and car traffic, almost equal to the mall. So we have almost twenty-four hours of businesses running, trucks beeping, lights on, and you almost get hit going out of your door, even at four o'clock in the morning for people who are trying to get to a gym that's open at five. But again, the traffic is just crazy. There are apparently on Shady Lane putting five hundred more senior apartments. You can't even get out of your street on Huntington Pike. It backs up from Rockledge all the way down to Huntington Valley.
So not to interrupt, but I do, I mean, these are important considerations, but this public comment period at the Committee of the Whole is specific to the agenda items before.
Sure. Well, here's an agenda item. I know apparently St. Basil's Commissioner Rothman has tried to involve us in a community meeting or a neighborhood meeting about what's going on at St. Basil's. So we did have a meeting, which was very nice of Commissioner Rothman, but then he informed us that there is a deal that was done between St. Basil's and the Toll Brothers. So there's already a plan in place. So it feels like that the residents had no input on this at all.
So, again, so that's not actually on this evening's agenda. Also, a very important issue before the township. I'm just wondering if you have comments specific to the business that we're gonna consider momentarily.
But it actually is. It violates the diagram that you just showed, that there's gonna be a neighborhood meeting, then there's, you shouldn't, as a citizen, be able to sell your land. If I was gonna sell my land and make it a dry cleaner, I couldn't do that. So I don't think anybody should be able to do that before following the steps that you set forth in your own diagram that you just showed us, correct?
So to be clear, nothing has come forward. There is no proposal for us to react to specifically at this time and to engage in the process that the manager described. Yes, there is clearly conversations and activity that has taken place between St. Basil's and Toll Brothers, but we do not have a specific proposal that we can sit down with the neighbors to review, get feedback, input, and decide what we as a community want to do. And if and when that time comes, that's exactly what we'll do.
But I do understand there's a contract, and I believe before a contract can be signed, there should be something available to neighbors to understand what the zoning might entail before you think about even changing the zoning. You know, per your diagram, it's not following it.
Well, so I would say that this is a, this is a transaction between two private organizations over which the township has no dominion. We have dominion over what they plan to do with the land, but they have not yet announced what they plan to do with the land. And until such time that that happens, we don't have the ability to regulate or approve or disapprove transactions between private entities.
Okay.
Commissioner Hacker, can I just make a quick comment there?
Briefly, yes.
Yep. And thank you to the resident. We have spoken and had pleasant conversations. I appreciate that. Just to put a fine point on it, the meeting that we had with St. Basil was actually, per my request, the participants were willing to speak with the public before the process is officially going. So while my opinions on what they presented have been documented, and there's a private transaction that they can discuss on their own, we are outside of what the, what the parameters are of what Manager Manfredi just showed. So that process that he demonstrated has not been kicked off, as you said. But to the speaker's point, yes, there was a conversation with the residents, but that was something that was optional to those private parties that I encouraged them to provide to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman, and thank you to the resident for her comments as well. The next person we have is actually a phone number, so if we could bring that person in and ask you to please report your name and address for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If we could have your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Dee Kucharsky. I live at six oh one Monroe Avenue.
Thank you.
The reason why I'm speaking is because I too live across the street from this massage parlor. And it's been nothing but a nightmare since we moved here a year ago. I'm heartbroken. I'm worried for the children that live in this neighborhood, for the families. It's very disturbing. It has caused me great stress as I speak to you. I am baffled that this place exists in this residential area. It makes no sense to me. It shouldn't be in an area like this. People take pride in their homes, and they want to live in a safe area with their children to be able to run and play on the street. My grandchildren can't even play outside, my little ones. I worry about them. I don't have any peace. I can't even sleep at night. I have PTSD. I suffered from this greatly for many years. And now, when I move here only a year now, I don't even leave my home. That's how disturbing this, this massage parlor, whatever you want to call it, it's illicit. It's not a legal one. It's very illicit. The place is running for seven days a week. Each morning, I step out of my home to go to church. Finally, I'm excited. Only to see one of these men show up at nine AM to be in there for like twelve minutes. He looks at me, I look at him. I'm disgusted. I don't understand why this place is in existence. And I, you know, it's baffling because my church was closed down, but this place was in operation. We couldn't go to so many places during this time of COVID, but this place is in operation, full-blown operation. They open at nine in the morning, and they're open till past nine thirty, ten thirty. And it's all men going in there constantly. I fear for my children. I fear for myself. I fear for my neighbors because we don't know what can happen next. We know what happened in Elanza. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. We regret that this has been your experience, and we certainly want, as a board, to help stamp out this activity in the township, and I believe tonight's discussion will reflect that. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will now move on to Summer nine one eight nine. Again, if you could state your name and record, I mean, address for the record, please.
My name is Betty Carr. I live at six eighty Hamill Avenue in Artsley.
Thank you.
I would like to thank you, Mr. Thompson, for your input and provided the information to me on the phone when I spoke with you. I have concerns regarding this massage parlor. It does not belong in this community, period. This would not be going on in Huntington Valley or the other side of this township. And I would like to know how many parlors are on the other side of this township. This evening, something went on with the police there. They had bolt cutters, masks, gloves. They posted a sign. I don't know what it says. Now that I'm hearing, they're saying it's shut down. Will this not be allowed to be opened in the future? And I cannot believe that the De Angelos that own that building would rent to something like that in this community. They live in this community. They have grandchildren in this community. I just don't understand it. And period. It does not, I don't care what ordinance you're in, it doesn't belong here. And I really, again, Mr. Thompson, I want to thank you for your input and information to me on the phone. But something has to be done here. We have children that live in this neighborhood. They're playing here. I mean, you know, you're scared to death. What's gonna happen? And I would like to make another comment. I made a call to Mr. Bowles. I left my name and number. He has never called me back or given me the, given me the concern, like, to, you know, at least be sociable to call me back. Because I have concerns about the properties of it. This is not on this agenda, and I'm not gonna be, I'll be very brief about it. At Tyson and Edge Hill and Jenkin Hamrose, it's a disgrace. It's the entrance into our community, and it looks like it's racing bond. Thank you again for the time that you've given me to speak.
Thank you for your comments and for sharing your perspective. And again.
And, Mr. Thompson? Are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, that they shut this down now tonight, will this reopen again?
That's a good question, and I don't know. We'll talk about that a little bit later, and we'll get an opinion from the solicitor and also the police chief.
Okay. And if whatever ordinance is passed, will we know what this ordinance is? Would someone let us know, or?
Sure, I can drop off a copy. I can, I'll even drop off a copy of the draft over the weekend.
Okay, I appreciate it, Michael. Thank you so much.
And just to clarify for those who are here about this issue this evening, the Committee of the Whole's role is to recommend the next step in the process. If we are in agreement with moving this forward, this ordinance does not pass and become law this evening. It has to be voted on and vetted at the full board meeting, which would occur next month in June. So can we please bring in Jeanette?
Hi, Jeanette Demeo, seven one seven Martin Road. I have a question under the new business agenda. It says, "Consider Penn State University Abington Campus's Request to Amend Zoning Ordinance of the Township, Providing For and Regulating a College/University Campus by Penn State." Okay, my question is, if there was a private deal already struck between St. Basil's and Penn State, why are they allowed to do that before they are not even granted an amendment to the zoning ordinance? Why is that legal according to Abington Code?
So let me help clarify. There's no deal between St. Basil's and Penn State. The St. Basil's issue relates to a potential deal of sale with the Toll Brothers Company. Penn State has been in discussions for some time about the possibility of constructing a new academic building on its campus and potentially wanting to rezone two properties that they own across the street on Cloverly Lane. And that's what that agenda item is about. But really, all we're gonna be doing this evening is having the opportunity to be introduced to the new Penn State Abington Chancellor, and she will be announcing an upcoming community meeting to talk about all of this.
Okay, so then the person who said that somebody had told them that they had already struck a deal with St. Basil's, you were telling me that that is not the case?
I'm saying that there's no relation between the Penn State issue and the St. Basil's issue, but that it is widely known that Toll Brothers and St. Basil's are in discussions about Toll Brothers purchasing their property.
So does that mean there will be neighborhood discussion about this? And what exactly is the format for the neighbors to discuss things? I mean, with COVID, the past year, basically, you just get on to one of these Zoom meetings, and you have about three minutes to talk, and then you're cut off. So what format are these meetings going to be in?
So I'm not gonna speak to that because this would be led by Commissioner Rothman, who is the Commissioner for Ward Three where this property is located. Drew, I don't know if you want to make a brief comment about what would entail?
Sure. Basically, so we can't answer that question as to exactly what would happen because of the diagram that was shown earlier, and I'm not sure if the resident was able to see that. If not, then this video will be available later.
I did see, I did see the diagram, but that's not answering the question, okay? As far as I have seen, the past year, the only actual input that neighbors get is getting on Zoom with these meetings.
What are you doing?
Is that, is that true? Have there been in-person meetings where many people have been notified and they can ask questions and have the questions answered? Because the questions aren't being answered, okay? The lack, you know, look, I don't mean to be coarse or to dump on anybody, but there has been no transparency, okay? Not with this, not with Willow Grove Mall. I mean, I agree with Ms. Lehman. Where is the financial analysis? The first thing the township should do is present this to people, let them look at it, okay? Not this stretch it. Why waste the time? You're stretching things, kicking it down the road, you know, weeks go into months. It's a waste of time. Why not just be transparent?
So, Manager Manfredi, you jumping in, or?
Yes, if I may.
I'm fine with that.
You ask great questions, ma'am. So let's deal with them as best we can. St. Basil's and Toll Brothers is a private transaction that Toll Brothers nor St. Basil's have submitted a formal plan to the township for the township to consider. A reason Commissioner Rothman is saying, we don't know what steps and what public input is going to take place, which of those number of steps or options the board is going to consider based on his recommendations, because they still have not submitted. As has been said a few times, the property owners entered into a transaction for sale, but they haven't submitted to us. So if they want to take a risk, whether you want to call it at their own peril, or, you know, should they get this, they're selling it for whatever condition. I can't get into the specifics of it because I don't know any of that.
Okay, I do, I do understand that. Okay, so what you're telling me is that they are entering into a transaction where Penn State would buy basically some of their undeveloped land.
Separate Penn State from St. Basil's and Toll.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Listen, I'm sorry. I mixed that up. Okay, in other words, it's Toll Brothers and St. Basil's, okay?
That is one, that is one particular transaction that will be dealt with separately, led by Ward Commissioner Rothman.
Okay, so my question here is Toll Brothers and St. Basil's, okay? They are in private discussions about Toll Brothers buying some of St. Basil's land. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, it seems to me that Toll Brothers, look, this is speculation, but why, why would they buy the land if they didn't feel that there was a good chance that they would get the zoning that they want, okay?
So I want to, we're trending in a direction that is way off of what's on the agenda this evening. I appreciate the dialogue. This is.
Okay. Look, I'll leave this as it is, but the thing is, this is just, you know, I'm watching, I'm watching the transactions and the way these processes have been moved along over the months and, you know, the taxpayers of this township really are not, you know, they're not getting the whole story, okay?
Ma'am, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
You have a lot of questions that are valid questions. I would be more than happy to talk with you. If you want to call me tomorrow morning at the Township Building.
Okay, what, what's the phone number?
Two six seven five three six one zero zero one. I will, if I'm not, if I'm in meetings in the morning, but if you leave your name, number, I will call you back, and we'll schedule some time that I can walk through this with you and answer any questions you have and break it down so that, so that when we're concluded, your questions will be answered.
Okay, okay. I'll take you up on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move on, I know Commissioner Bowle had asked to make a brief comment as has Commissioner Spiegelman. I'll ask that you keep it brief. We still have quite a few people who want to speak.
Absolutely, Vice President Hacker. I just have been spending the last couple of minutes looking for a voicemail from Ms. Carr, and it looks like her phone, I apologize, Ms. Carr, I do see you have a voicemail from Tuesday. I will give you a call tomorrow. The phone number came up as unknown, and my phone tends to dump those into a blocked messages, blocked callers list, so instead of the phone number coming up. But I will be more mindful of that in the future, and I'll give you a call tomorrow. Thanks for pointing out that you left a message on Tuesday. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowle. President Spiegelman?
Thank you very much, Vice President Hacker. I will be very brief with this, but it keeps coming up, and I think it's just an important thing for people to understand, so that hopefully it takes a lot of confusion off the table. This whole thing with Toll Brothers and St. Basil's. When an entity like Toll Brothers wants to buy something like St. Basil's, they can, by Pennsylvania real estate law, they can sign a contract so that they. so that they, it's, it's a conditional purchase, so they become what's called an equitable owner and they have the right, they have certain rights, just like a property owner would, including to submit a, a text amendment and do other things like they're the owner. But generally they put in like, in effect, an escape clause so that if they don't get the zoning they want, if that, if it doesn't happen, if they don't get the text amendment, et cetera, then they can get out of the deal and the deal breaks apart. But we have no control over that deal or no control over whether or not there's any kind of escape clause that is, as you very aptly pointed out, Vice President Hager, transact, transaction between two private property owners and buyers, and that is it.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Now we can now call in Tricia Carney.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, we can hear. If you could just state your name and address for the record, thank you.
Absolutely. My name is Trish Carney Brueger. I live at seven seventy-four Monroe Avenue.
Yes.
And I'm here to just make a couple of quick comments. I don't want to belabor the things that have already been stated regarding the massage parlor up in the next block. I do want to say however, that for almost fifteen years, the six, seven and eight hundred blocks of Monroe Avenue have maintained a neighbors organization. We are in close contact with each other. We watch out for each other's children. We borrow cups of sugar from each other. We, we all have a stake in these three blocks here and I believe eighty-five percent of the residents of those three blocks do belong to the neighbors group. And I believe that out of that eighty-five percent, uh, there's just, just from scuttlebutt and from feedback that I've been getting, a lot of concern, folks that aren't speaking tonight, but there is a lot of concern about what's going on with that business. That said, and I did look at the, the proposed language for the, I guess if you want to call it a reworked ordinance, the, the language is great. Who is going to be doing all the enforcing of all these licenses? Maintenance of the licenses of the technicians? I mean, it, it, they have to renew annually. It just seems like, wow, who's going to be doing all that enforcement? Additionally, I completely lost my train of thought where I was headed with this next. Additionally, no, I'm sorry, I'm back with you again. Shouldn't the landlords have some kind of stake? Shouldn't the landlords, there be language within that new ordinance that the property owners and landlords bear some of the onus of, you know, or some kind of responsibility for the folks they're running to? If they've been receiving neighbor complaints for year after year after year and they don't just take care of it just to be a good neighbor, isn't there some way in, within the ordinance that we can put something in there that's enforceable for the property owners as well? Thanks so much for your time tonight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time and your comments, and I think you'll hear those things reflected in the upcoming discussion. So thank you. Next up is Pam. All right, we just need to, you need to unmute Pam? You're not yet unmuted. And give it another second and if not, we'll put Pam back in the queue and see if we can clear those technical difficulties up. Are you able to unmute? All right, let's move on to the next and if Pam can figure it out, we'll certainly entertain her comments. The next up is Mandy Squirrel.
Hi. Uh, I'm not sure if you can hear me. This is my first time ever doing this.
Yes, we can hear you. If you could just give us your name and address for the record and then
Totally Annie, not squirrel, that's for my grandchildren. I didn't know to change it. Seven nineteen Harrison Avenue.
Thank you.
And basically speaking on behalf of the massage parlor, you know, it's, it's not a good thing. It's, it's, you know, it really looks like it's trafficking, human trafficking and, you know, where, you know, we'll get you to this country and you can work it off and you never work it off. Like, it's almost a form of slavery going on in there, I believe. I don't know for sure, but I sure as heck like it out of here. So I just wanted to back all the other people that are working hard on this.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Next, well, let's see, is, is Pam able to unmute? Okay, let's move on. Oh, okay. Yeah, if just, if we could get your name, full name and address for the record, please?
I'm Pam Hastings.
Oh, hi Pam. It's nice to, nice to hear from you.
Nice to hear from you too. I'm just listening and I have been listening to many meetings and I, I don't know this process well enough and maybe this is the inappropriate time to ask, but I just want to know, are things ever answered here? Or is there some way I can follow up with you to get answers? It seems like we all present some problem or question or concern and there aren't really answers. You just take into account that we have, you know, aired a grievance or whatever. And I would like to know what, what is the process for getting through and following up with you and, and being more active in helping the community?
Well, certainly there's opportunity for that, whether you want to go through your Ward Commissioner or through the Board Leadership or the Township Manager. We strive to provide detailed answers, can't always do it in the context of the meeting, given the number of people that wish to speak, but you know, if there are specific concerns that you have, I certainly would be happy to talk with you. I believe Commissioner Carswell is your Commissioner, based on where you now live and I'm sure she would be happy to follow up as well.
You left us and now we're, we're just grieving over that, but we love, we love Jessica. So I guess I should just go through Jessica and, and present questions and because I, I am in full support of everything Laura is, is presenting and saying. And as a neighborhood, we, we want to be behind Laura and all of this action or inaction against this proposed apartment complex, multi-complexes in the mall parking lot. So there, there are many things you've brought up tonight. I'd like to have a voice in.
Well, you certainly have that opportunity and I would encourage you to follow up with Commissioner Carswell. I find her to be very responsive.
Thank you. I don't want to waste any more of your time. Thank you so much.
Not a waste. Thank you very much.
God bless, Janella. God bless. Good night.
Good night. Next up is Anna Marie Silva.
Hi, yes, I'm Anna Marie Silva. I'm been like, had mentioned, I, I spoke a little bit before. So I live on Monroe Avenue, I'm at six forty-five Monroe.
Because I want to make a quick comment.
Excuse me? I'm sorry. Hello?
No, please continue.
Um, so I heard some other people and my heart is broken and really bad that this has become this and that it doesn't seem, it just seems like this has been going on so long and it just keeps falling on deaf ears. And I don't understand how that this Abington Township, who's supposed to be so, such a great township to live in, it would continue to allow this to go on. And it's embarrassing for me to pull down the block and see that place. I agree with Mrs. Carr. I can't believe that the Anglos would allow this to go on and not do anything about it. I know for one thing, every time I need to get, you know, get like, anything you're doing in your house, you need to get legal documents, go to the township. And the fact that not, nothing that he's being held accountable to rent to someplace like this. I mean, it's not a massage par, parlor. It's, it's illegal. There is trafficking going over there. There's not even a doubt. There's not even like, I, maybe, it is. And it's like to keep continuing, everybody turn and look the other way. We're going to be bringing more and more bad things in this neighborhood. There's, it's already been held up with a gun. It closes down and opens up again. And it just keeps coming back. It's like you can't get rid of it. It's, it's not an apartment. They live there. I've sat out there myself and they don't leave. So they're living into a, it's something that's supposed to be, and they know that people running there, that to them, that they don't leave. They know that they're living in there and it's not an apartment. And for this to go on this long. And I mean, I pay over, I pay over six thousand dollars a year in taxes to live on Monroe Avenue and it's just bringing the value down because no one's going to want to live here going by and seeing that. There's a woman at, there's a, a man on the front. There's not, there's no women in there. You go there and I parked the car and I sat outside, the lights are out, all out, pitch dark. All of a sudden the light goes on and a man comes out. And again, there's no fifteen, twenty minutes. I get a massage and it usually lasts about an hour and a half, an hour, fifteen minutes, never fifteen minutes. There's young kids coming around the back, not even eighteen years old and going in there. And they're getting serviced. It's, it sucks trafficking right in our face. And I too want to ask, what we're voicing these opinions and what happens next? How did, how do you, how does this happen? How does this keep going on? And it, and like, we're, we're all here talking again about it and we're all up in arms, but who's still, who's going to do anything about it?
Well, I think that's the purpose of the agenda item this evening, which is why we're actually talking about it here at the Committee of the Whole. There is a draft in front of us that we want to review, tighten up and make sure is workable from all perspectives, including the attorneys and the police departments, so that we have a tool that will be an effective tool in weeding out this activity in our community. That's the intent.
Well, I hope so because it's, I mean, if this is, we've, there's been meetings over this for years after years and calling the police over ten years and it's still there and it just keeps closing out, closing down and opening up. I mean, that's really disheartening.
We, we understand and we, we've heard you and tonight we are taking the first step of action to, to keep this from happening in the future.
Okay, it's, it's nice to be heard.
Well, thank you for coming out and sharing your perspective. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is a caller and I will ask that caller to identify their, their full name and address for the record, please.
Hello?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, my name is Amanda Kacharsky and I live at six oh one Monroe Avenue, directly across from the massage parlor. I have several concerns. I've been living here for a year and I've been observing the women and like Anna Marie just said, it's obviously these women are trafficked. I never see them leave. It's a business. It's not a residential place. They shouldn't be in there. It's not enough room for all of these women to be in there. I don't see that they have anything. Once I went across the street to knock on the door because one of their clientele parked across the street in front of the new parking sign and I asked that he would move and I felt like the woman looked very undernourished. I feel like they have nothing. Someone is making a profit off of these women. It's definitely prostitution. Their clientele consists of perpetrators, perverts. And also, one day my daughter was outside and she got stared down by a man who came out of there. She's eight years old. She came in to tell us that a man was staring at her. Pedophiles are coming into our, our neighborhood because of this place. That's all that this place is going to draw. It's a danger to our kids and I worry also that this place gets shut down and then it opens right back up. My husband told me that when the ordinance was revoked, that week thirteen of these places popped up. I guess word spreads pretty quickly among criminals and somehow they're under the radar. And what I don't understand is it's obviously human trafficking and human trafficking is against the law and this is the United States. How is this allowed and permitted to continue to go on? And what I don't like to see is that these women are going to jail. They're the victims. They should be treated as victims and we should be going after the perpetrators. They're pimps, the people that are keeping them there, the people that promised them a better life and locked them up in a dungeon. They've been here for how long? I don't even think they speak English. There, there's no hope for these women unless somebody from the outside has a voice for them because they don't have a voice. The answer is not locking these women up. The answer is going after the people that are doing this, that are opening these places all over the place, who hear that the ordinance is revoked and they open up thirteen. These women are just disposable to them. And they take the fall for them while they live large somewhere. And I don't understand how that the police department, who is law enforcement, isn't able to enforce the law and shut these places down. It's an illicit, sexual, perverted place where perverts come and they're bringing them into our neighborhood and our children could become victims. When my daughter told me that that man was looking at her, I was horrified. I'm not okay with this and I, I think that more needs to be done.
Well, we appreciate your perspective and again, we regret that this has been your experience. We share your concern. We agree that more needs to be done. That is the intent of this evening's discussion, so that we can move to an enforceable ordinance that will not allow this activity to continue anywhere in the township. And I'm going to ask Chief Malloy, who wants to make a few comments, just to speak now. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Vice President Hager. I will not take a lot of time because I know you have other residents that would like to speak, but I just want to take a moment to encourage everybody who is here. If you could stay on to hear from the commander of our Detective Division. We take a lot, a lot of pride in ownership of, of problems in our community and I assure you that everything in our power has been done down there. And there's been a number of areas of frustration. There's been a number of claims made this evening that Lieutenant Fink will, will address. And I assure you with regard to human trafficking and some of the other issues that have been brought up, many of these things have been investigated and we are going to continue to take this proactive approach. In fact, the ordinance that was rescinded was, was because of our former chief who used this ordinance in order to close a number of massage parlors in the past. So we hope to talk about that later this evening, but I just wanted to encourage everyone, Vice President Hager, if they could stay on, because Lieutenant Fink will put some context into some of these things. But we do share your frustration and, and your concerns and we want to do our best to, to, to end this.
Thank you, Chief Malloy. Appreciate your comments very much. We'll now call upon Daniel Carl. You can unmute yourself, sir.
There you go. Okay. We good?
Yes, yeah, just give us your full name and address, please, before you start your comments.
Sure. Daniel Carl, six fifteen Monroe.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to reiterate and reinforce all the comments that have been made about the massage parlor. I live directly across the street from it. And we've lived here for five years and the clientele, the situation has just gotten worse and worse and worse. I know you're doing everything that you can. I know they got shut down today, but there's a light on in the back of the massage parlor right now. I don't know if anybody's even supposed to be in there. I don't know if it's an emergency light. But so, and unfortunately, we can't just call the police every time there's a something fishy going on because by the time, by, by the time it happens and we make the phone call, whoever's out there acting strangely or doing whatever they're doing, it's too late. You know? So we just, as a neighborhood, as this block in particular and as a community, we just we're tired of having our hands tied and we're tired of you guys having your hands tied. So we just need to know what we can do as a neighborhood to help keep this out of our neighborhood and stop it from continuing.
Well, we appreciate that concern, that perspective. It's clear that your commissioner has heard you, this board has heard you and we intend to work with you to take action to regulate this behavior in Abington Township. So thank you for coming out and sharing your perspective this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Sam. Again, if you could please give us your full name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Sam Luskin. I live on seven oh two Monroe Avenue. I just have a quick question about the massage parlor. Because of all the allegations of human trafficking and Um, because of all the allegations of human trafficking and the awful, awful experiences that those women are probably going through. Um, I'm just wondering, uh, because it sounds like you guys are, but are you guys going to be continue, like the police going to be continuing to investigate further? And if so, will we be hearing about that?
Chief Malloy, would you like to respond to that briefly?
Uh, Vice President Hacker, is, is it okay if I have, um, Lieutenant, uh, Fink, the commander of our investigations division who's been working on this with other agencies, address that because there's things that I can say and cannot say, and I, I think he would give a, uh, better answer.
That would be fine. Lieutenant Fink, if he's, if he's in. Good evening.
Yes. Good, good evening, commissioners and residents. Thank you for having me on here. Um, I'm sitting in a room right now with my, one of my detective sergeant, Sean Newsbit, who's been assigned to investigate this particular massage parlor since 2018. Um, so we, we have been extensively, um, doing everything we can, as the chief said, to, um, make sure that any crimes that we're able to enforce are, are enforced. This is a very difficult situation. We are working with federal agencies. From the human trafficking angle of this, there's always, um, the possibility is always there. There are some indicators, however, we have not to this point been able to establish any evidence that there is human trafficking. Uh, to speak briefly about, um, the, uh, because of the trafficking element that's often associated with massage parlors in a general term, um, the Montgomery County DA's office does not endorse, charging these women with prostitution, even if it does exist. Uh, there's a, uh, there, there's a, there's a thought out there that they're, um, that what they're doing is, um, against their will. So to further victimize them would be, uh, so our hands are kind of tied. That's why this ordinance is so important. I was out there this evening with my detectives when we, um, went out there with code enforcement and the fire marshal's office and the building inspector, and we shut them down for various code violations. And I, I spoke through a translator with both the women who were, who were inside the employees there and gave them multiple opportunities, asked them, are you in any danger? Are you any, do you need any help from the police? We can help you. And they, wh- which is one of the, the reasons why we're handcuffed. They said, no, no, we're no danger. There was no sign of any malnourishment. They had cell phones. They had a car parked out front. They had keys. In fact, when they were finished, they drove away. So w- without cooperation from the victims, it, it makes it very difficult to prove a human trafficking case or to establish any evidence. I think the most, the strongest thing that would help us in this situation is to adopt an ordinance, which would allow us to, uh, look into the background. These massage therapists are required to be licensed by the state. So we could, uh, verify that they were in fact licensed, that they went to a legitimate, um, school to learn how to be a masseuse. The, uh, we would not handle the license for the therapist, but we would be able to handle a license for the actual business itself. They would have to present identification for anyone working in there as they did in the past, which would enable us to run background checks and, um, see if there's any prior convictions for prostitution or we can check with Homeland Security, uh, various federal agencies to see if there's, um, any indication of any human trafficking. I could answer some specific questions if, if you have any, but.
I think we'll move that to the agenda item itself. I just wanted the opportunity for the, the speaker, since she raised that here, but the, I think there will be further opportunity, uh, during that time for questions from commissioners.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Lieutenant. And thank you for your question. Um, so next up we have Angela Giordano.
Hi, this is Angela Giordano.
Yes, please give us your address for the record.
Hi, 663 Monroe Avenue.
Yes.
I, I just want to address, um, similar concerns that we had for the massage parlor. Um, I don't want this to fall on deaf ears, but what can we do in the future? And not that you have to answer right now, but what can we do? Do we have to call 911 every single day that we feel that we see misconduct in that business? Um, this is really sad that my family has moved out of the city into the suburbs back where I was from and my past generations are from, to move into a neighborhood that will not, you know, take care of what's going on here. Like this is blatant. It's right in your face. Um, so I guess what I'm trying to ask is what other people have asked. And I do appreciate Patrick, um, Trish, all the neighborhood effort that has been made. Amanda, Anne Marie, to try to say there is something wrong here. Um, and I do understand police's standpoint that they cannot do beyond, you know, what the law will allow, but how many times do we have to say there's something wrong here in the suburbs, in a beautiful neighborhood? Um, that really needs to be addressed here. So I am very concerned as a neighbor of this block, recent neighbor, only bought about a year and a half ago. And I'm already considering moving because of this establishment. It's so sad. I was raised in Abington. My parents were raised in Abington. We love it. I have Abington pride. I love it so much. And it's so sad that because I live on this block now, I am embarrassed to have people drive down my street. I am not only embarrassed, I have young children that I am afraid for. I'm afraid for the women that I do see coming out of cars with packing supplies. They're coming out with suitcases and like someone else said, um, comforters. Um, and so I just want to know, are we supposed to call every single day 911? Are we supposed to call every single day to say there is something wrong here? Um, a- and that's all I wanted to pose here. It's really sad and I feel like an ordinance to check a massage parlor license should already be established. I work in healthcare. My husband's a police officer. There's no reason why that business as a licensed massage parlor, right? A licensed massage parlor should not undergo a regular license check and be an actual business that is established and, and, and able to execute business. I'm just very upset and I know other people have said it. I don't want to fall on deaf ears, but this is very sad for this community. This is a beautiful neighborhood and this is not exactly what I expected as far as moving here, um, about a year and a half ago. And I really appreciate Pat for, um, sending out the newsletter and, um, getting us all to join in tonight because this is very important. This is our neighborhood. Do we want a massage parlor that's having human trafficking that you can't deny be part of our neighborhood and a part of our block for little kids? It, it's sad. Um, so I'm sorry, uh, to digress, but, um,
It's okay.
I really hope that, um, Lieutenant Fink and, and all of your, um, police enforcement can actually make a difference because it's hard. I understand that they are limited in what they can do um, with the laws that are established, but there has to be some solution to this. Abington is a beautiful community. Abington is a wonderful community and I want to be proud to live here. And I want to be proud to be on this block and I love it, you know? Um, so I just wanted to voice my concern and just say, you know, Abington's great. Monroe Avenue is a beautiful place to live, but this establishment has to go. So I'm sorry, that's it.
No, that's okay. We appreciate your perspective and the concerns you've raised. And we will endeavor to answer the question you've raised during discussion of the agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up we have Kaki Braun Evans.
Hello, everyone. Um, I just have a question. I assume I was, didn't guide on to about after eight, uh, 40 around. Are we on the agenda part of public comment before?
We, we are in public comment. We have not yet gotten to any part of the agenda.
Okay. So for agenda item under new business age, you know, I am dialing in. I just need some clarification about, um, what's going to happen with the, uh, 1231 Susquehanna Road. I received an email and thank you very much, Manager Manfredi. And he said that one action the board can take to provide the EAC time we're requesting and to simply move the matter to the June 10th agenda. Would, are, is that, is that the possibility that instead of tonight, making a decision that it would go to the June 10th agenda of the committee of the whole or of the board of commissioners' regular meeting?
So the intent would be, and I intend to, uh, raise this so that there's actually, doesn't need to be much discussion about that agenda item at all. We would like to push that to the June committee of the whole meeting, which would allow for sufficient time for that, um, the environmental advisory committee to do its review.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Kaki. Uh, next up we have Drew. You can just unmute yourself. There you go.
Yes, hi.
Yes. Yeah, if we can hear you, just give us your, uh, full name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Drew Warope. I live on Brentwood Road, just down the street from Penn State Abington.
Yep.
So, uh, I just have a few questions. Um, I assume the development at Penn State Abington, excuse me, is due to increased demand, increased student demand? Um, it's a, it's a beautiful campus. I, I go there, uh, almost every weekend for a walk. Um, my question is this, you know, is there a plan? You know, with the increased development that's going on there, is there a plan or will there be an opportunity to discuss calming of traffic around the surrounding neighborhood? That's my first question.
So the, I, I can answer that directly. The intent is that the community meeting that we'll soon hear about from the Penn State chancellor, who is with us this evening, will be an opportunity to address those community issues.
Okay, great. Um, so my next question is, um, I understand Penn State pays, um, I'm not sure what to call it. Is it a donation? Um, they pay money to the police traffic safety department, I believe, to, um, calm traffic. I've heard that at previous meetings. So my question on that is, is that money dedicated to the surrounding, um, streets of Penn State Abington or is that just go into a general fund to, uh, for the overall township?
Well, I can let the manager speak to that more directly, but the, there's, there's an agreement between Penn State Abington and the township, uh, for payment for services that we provide.
Okay. Does that money go to a dedicated fund for the surrounding streets or does it go to a general fund?
There's no dedicated fund for the surrounding streets. I mean, there is, there are services that we provide to Penn State and th- they provide resources for those services. Um, Manager Manfredi, would you like to comment further?
Commissioner Hacker, I'll, I'll answer very briefly and I'm sure the chief Malloy can answer in greater detail. But yes, there, there is an agreement for a specific scope of services to be provided by police officers with Penn State. And that money comes in and offsets our costs for doing so. And, and I'm sure the chief can get into greater detail if you, if you'd like. Thank you, Manager Manfredi. Just real quickly to add on to that. Um, there, at the beginning of school, there is a dedicated amount that is used just in that area of Penn State. And that usually comes in, um, once a year as part of our traffic blitz. And all money, mon- monies received from Penn State are specific to the streets around, uh, Penn State University.
Thank you, Chief Malloy.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Um, yeah, but so I just want, I will, uh, keep this brief. I'll just end with a, a simple comment. You know, I've been home during the COVID crisis and I've witnessed, um, with COVID reopening. I've seen, I've seen increased traffic on my street, which is about a quarter mile from Penn State. And, um, and it, um, I, I don't, I, it seems that the students are, um, you know, there's, there's more, it seems that the, the traffic is, is getting increased due to increased student, um, participation. Um, but I don't see, I don't see that enforcement, but, uh, I'm not saying that it's not being done. I just don't see it. Um, so I, I would just like to express my interest in having more increased enforcement surrounding the Penn State campus because it, it directly affects our street and our neighborhood. Um, and that's, that's my final comment and I look forward to hearing from the chancellor.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments this evening. Uh, next up is Lee.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Just, uh, you're.
Okay, yes. This is Joseph Applegate. I spoke at the earlier meeting. I'm at 205 Elm Avenue in Glen Side. Um, I was just listening to all the people that had commented on that, um, massage parlor up at Monroe and Jenkentown Road. I've lived here for 27 years and unfortunately I didn't even know any of this was going on. I think the first I heard about this was about a month ago from, um, Commissioner Thompson. And, um, this is just appalling that these people have to continuously contact you, the township and complain and complain and complain and it's taken this long and that much red tape. I'm surprised. I mean, uh, Detective, uh, Fink, I think he's, his name was earlier spoke about what they were trying to do. It seems to me by now they should have had enough probable cause to at least do a raid on this place and take enough, have filming and cameras up there to, to do something about and getting this place shut down permanently. I, I, I'm saddened for all these people to live up there and I don't know what I would do if it was next door to me. I, I, I'd, I'd go out of my mind. Um, uh, it, it's just, it's shocking to me that this has been going on as long as it has. And I'm, I wasn't even aware of it. And I think all the people in the neighborhood, if we can't get action from our township and the police, we have to get up and exercise our first amendment right and we got to get out and start protesting the streets and stand outside of that place with bull horns and start yelling and complaining like I've seen on TV with all the other people complaining about issues. This is how we're going to get the stuff done by people getting together and standing up and saying enough's enough. And if anybody wants to chime in and, and let me know what can be done other than that, I, I just think this is what we have to do as a community.
Thank you for your perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is the Cochrane family. I just need to unmute yourself. Are you able to unmute yourself? Perhaps not. I don't know if the Cochrane family and John Cochrane are one and the same, but we could try to bring John Cochrane in. Are you able to unmute yourself? Give it one more second. Are either the Cochrane family or John Cochrane present and, uh, prepared to, uh, provide public comment? Okay. Then I think we will move on, uh, to our agenda. And, uh, as presiding officer of the meeting, I'm going to take some liberties with the agenda this evening. Um, and we are going to hold on the item A under unfinished business until later in the meeting. I would like to, uh, move right into new business because, um, we have the, the honor and pleasure this evening of having the new Penn State Abington chancellor with us and we're going to bring her in. But before we do, let me just provide a brief introduction. Um, Margot Dela, Dela Carpeni assumed the position of chancellor and dean of Penn State Abington on January 4th, 2021. She has compiled an accomplished record of strategic leadership and a demonstrated commitment to student access and success academic scholarship. academic scholarship, community outreach, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. Prior to coming to Abington, Dr. Deli Carpeini was Vice Provost for Strategic Educational Partnerships and Dean of the College of Education and Human Development at the University of Texas at San Antonio. Um, as dean, she grew the full-time faculty complement, oversaw the development of new degree programs, including a doctoral program in School Psychology, and led the launch of the Department of Race, Ethnicity, Gender, and Sexuality Studies. Um, Dr. Dela Carpeini is a first-generation, non-traditional student, and I think she understands the value and role of higher institutions in the lives of of students. Uh, she earned her Bachelor's Degree in Linguistics, her Master's Degree in uh TSOL, and Doctorate in Linguistics, all from the State University of New York at Stony Brook. Uh, she is a Licensed English as a Second Language Educator and School District Administrator through the New York State Education Department. Dr. Deli Carpeini, welcome to Abington. Welcome to this lengthy board meeting. Uh, we're delighted to have you here this evening.
Thank you very much, Tom, and um thank you for having me. Um, and before I share, just, you know, getting to know you all, I just want to say, um, you know, this is very alarming to hear about the human trafficking issue, and it's obviously a law enforcement issue. But we do have faculty on campus who are doing groundbreaking work on human trafficking across the state of Pennsylvania, and we can be a resource to the community and the township. So we are here, um, and and if there's anything that we can do to help, we are here to do that. Um, but again, thank you all for having me tonight um and and for the time. Um, so I want to just share, I want to use this opportunity to share a little bit about myself and my path to Penn State Abington and some of my vision for the campus. Um, as Tom said, my educational background started at in New York um at Stony Brook University. I was a faculty member after that at Lehman College, which is part of the City University of New York. And then I went from the Bronx to Eastern Kentucky, where I was the Dean of the College of Education at Morehead State University. And so, um, as you can imagine, Bronx to Eastern Kentucky was quite an interesting move, but it was a it was a wonderful move nonetheless. And then, as Tom said, my most recent um position was at the University of Texas at San Antonio. And at all of these institutions, my focus was on building strong and mutually beneficial partnerships with the surrounding communities to address challenges and solve problems and provide opportunity for both students and community members. And I'm very honored to have been selected as the Chancellor at Penn State Abington. The campus is very aligned with my own professional passions. It's a student-centered campus with a commitment to community partnership and to providing access and increasing college-going. The campus has a significant positive impact on the community, and it really is an engine of economic mobility for students. Um, I was attracted to Abington because of the important role that the Commonwealth campuses play. President Barron of Penn Penn State University in two thousand nineteen, he discussed that impact. And he said that the Commonwealth campuses provide access and opportunity. They have huge impact on students and communities, and they fulfill, um, they help fulfill the land-grant mission of Penn State, which, as we know, Penn State is one of the top research institutions in 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 the country, and I would say in the world. Um, and on a personal level, because we don't make career decisions in a vacuum, I'm very happy to be back in my home region. While I did grow up in New York, I have strong ties to Pennsylvania. I have family in Pittsburgh and Bushkill and Reading, as well as family in New Jersey, so I'm very happy to be back in my home region and and happy to be a part of the Abington community. Um, I have just finished my first semester at Penn State Abington, and I organized that first semester around um some some goals. And first was to listen and to learn. So I have been on quite a listening tour, and despite the challenges that COVID has presented um in getting to know people, both on campus and off campus. Um, if you look at my schedule starting in January to now, it's um hard to see any gaps in it, and most of them were filled with meetings and really getting to know the campus community and the surrounding community and understanding um what's important and and what stakeholders um would like to see for our forward momentum. And I'm now at the point where I'm prioritizing campus initiatives, all of the things that I've learned, and I'm developing a framework for my own transition priorities. And thinking about, um, there there's a lot of goals, and so I'm not going to give you that list of goals tonight, but two of my main goals that I think might be interesting to to for tonight's discussion are a focus on academic excellence um and student success, of course, because as a a university, our core mission is academics, and we don't exist um other than for our students and their success, but also for creating a community-engaged campus. Um, as I said earlier, all of the institutions that I have had the honor of serving at have really my my work and my engagement has been focused on creating strong partnerships. Um, in terms of academic excellence and student success, we know that higher education is a very competitive field. And just in our region alone, I when I'm counting, I'm counting over thirty colleges and universities within a twenty-mile radius of where we are. Um, and Penn State is a, um, you know, it's a flagship institution. It's a world-class institution, consistently ranked as one of the top universities. Um, and our ability to be competitive and offer our students that world-class Penn State experience requires investments in our people, in our community, and in our facilities. So providing our existing students with innovative degree programs, high-impact experiential and co-curricular learning opportunities, connections to our community and economic partners, and to modern learning spaces and technology enables Penn State Abington to provide that high-quality experience that Penn State is known for. And universities also contribute greatly to the communities um in which they reside. Um, Penn State is an economic powerhouse. It contributes um more than eleven billion with a B dollars to the state's economy, and the Commonwealth campuses are a huge part of that overall contribution. Penn State Abington contributes about a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars um to the region in terms of, um, you know, and and in terms of um contributions back, and we really are a driver of economic development. For every hundred jobs on campus, there are thirty-three additional jobs that are supported in the regional economy. And overall, Penn State Abington either directly or indirectly supports about fifteen hundred jobs um in Abington and in the region. So there's a saying that great universities need great communities, and great communities need great universities. And I think that Penn State Abington is a great college in a great community. And I believe that for Penn State Abington, community engagement is an obligation. And as public colleges and universities, we do have an obligation to our communities to provide innovative partnerships and support and to really serve as cultural and intellectual hubs. And I'm excited, um, given the existing and growing economic um and community partners that Penn State Abington has cultivated in in the in the community. I'm really excited to work with the township to develop innovative partnering opportunities that benefit all of us. And I really am a firm believer in approaching partnerships um in a way that respects the needs of the community and where we're collaboratively determining the direction and how the college can best serve. And the goal is really enhancing outcomes. Um, so I always joke, I say my approach is not, you know, knock-knock, we're the university and we're here to help, but rather one where we're working together to co-identify initiatives, to have a clear understanding of the strengths and the capacity of the campus, and to leverage that so we can create sustainable, mutually beneficial, and collaboratively developed opportunities to work together. And so my goal and my my vision and my commitment is to build on the already strong connections to the community and create multiple entry points for engagement. And and we already are doing, you know, we already very, we have strong partnerships. So um, Penn State Abington awards sixty thousand dollars in annual scholarships to Abington Township students, and um over three hundred thousand scholarships have been awarded since two thousand sixteen. Um, the the college um contributed five million dollars to the Memorial Field renovation, which was a benefit for Penn State Abington and the Abington School District. Um, at Applethorpe Park, we renovated the public baseball field and built a new softball field. And as um one of the um callers said earlier, we do um co-fund an emergency manager and um contribute to the Police Department to really help offset some of the costs that are involved in having, you know, in in working with the campus and the community together. And so I I really look at a lot of possibilities in terms of engagement um around education and really building capacity there in partnership, in enhancing college access and college-going, in creating more internships and service learning opportunities. So we're connecting the university, the college, and our students to economic partners and to fulfilling community needs. I think also policy and advocacy are a place where partnership is natural, so we can partner to advance change, um, community-engaged research, so we can solve real-world problems and and work to identify what what the community is interested in working on. And then community outreach and engagement. And again, really seeing Abington serving as a cultural and intellectual hub in the community, providing public access, and thinking about the continuing education opportunities that we can continue to build to serve the community. And there are a lot of exciting things happening on campus. Um, we have new degree programs. We just have an approved Bachelor of Science in Cybersecurity and Analytics. We have a Health Humanities Degree under review, and we are developing a business analytics option in our current Bachelor of Science in Business. We are hiring a Director of Continuing Education, so if you know anybody who might be interested, please um direct them to the HR website, and um we'd be happy to see their application. And I've also really focused on um my leadership team and how we're approaching leadership on the campus and identifying strategic initiatives that will sit at the Chancellor and the Cabinet level to really help drive the drive the college forward. And one thing that I want to share tonight is that I um as a result of all of the listening that I've done, I will be standing up a Town and Gown Committee, and I'm not sure that that's what we're going to continue to call it, but this will really be a committee that will promote positive relationship between the campus and 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 our residents and our neighbors. Um, I hope that it will, my my goal is that it'll be comprised of campus leaders and administrators, community members, representatives of neighborhood organizations, um, our local and university um police representation, town government. And the committee will discuss a wide variety of relevant issues and work to find solutions to problems that may arise. And I really think it'll play an important role in information sharing and building um building on and and strengthening the cooperative working relationship between Penn State Abington and the community. And I see Penn State Abington as a place-based anchor with the community and the college as co-leaders in the partnership efforts. And I think that together we can really grow our community in positive ways that add value, that enrich experiences of the people who call Abington and the surrounding area home, and I look forward to our work together. And I look forward to meeting the greater community to update you all on campus initiatives um and to allow you to get to know me and obviously to, you know, update you on um our the the academic building and and the plans that we are um working on with that. And that will be a meeting that will take place on June second, and the venue and the time will be forthcoming. Um, but I'm excited to take to to meet more people and engage in discussion and and hear um the community members. So I want to thank you again for inviting me tonight, Tom, and Commissioners and Town Manager. Thank you all for your time, and it was my pleasure to meet you all and to be able to have this opportunity to um just present tonight on who I am and what my goals are with our campus.
Thank you, Chancellor. It's uh important to hear from you and to hear your vision. We look forward to working with you and your team in new and innovative ways. Um, and we also look forward to the June meeting uh where members of the community will have a chance to get to know you better and hear directly from you, not only your vision, but specific plans and thoughts about the necessity of the building that has been, you know, underway in discussions for quite some time now.
Yes.
Um, does anybody on the board have any comments or questions for the Chancellor before we let her evening end? No. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So this agenda item then is, and you can read it here, basically, we're authorizing a path forward uh that would include um the Penn State holding its neighbor meeting uh to seek input from the affected neighbors about the proposed academic building to have concerns successfully addressed. And if so, then for us to send, you know, their proposed final version of something to the Planning Commission for their review and consideration before we would even agree to entertain moving this forward as a board, so we have as much information as possible. Uh, am I correct in that synopsis, Manager Manfredi?
Yes, sir, that is one option, and if that's what how you choose to proceed, then that would be a viable option.
Yeah, so I just want to be clear, because I know there are residents um from my ward who have listened in this evening. We are not taking action to authorize anything this evening. The intent in inviting the Chancellor um it was to promote further community engagement and dialogue. And having inherited this issue upon coming into the role last year, I understand better now, after talking with the neighbors and having a meeting with them um and and actually going through a community meeting last fall, what some of the concerns are with respect to traffic issues in and around campus. And I look forward to a dialogue with you, with the Chancellor, with the manager, with the Police Department, on how we can address those things, which need to be addressed um regardless of what the plans are that are underway. So again, this is not motion to approve anything. This is a motion to move forward to get clarity on what the needs and concerns are, working to address those before we formally entertain any proposal in its final form. So I'm going to make that motion and see if there is a second.
Second. Okay. To be to be clear, so your motion is to require neighbor meetings, planning commission review, and planning commission recommendations back to the community of the whole?
Yeah, assuming that uh the outcome of the neighbor meetings are is that we can, you know, that they're successful addressing concerns that have been raised.
Just wanted to make sure it was clear.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Um, all those in favor?
Commissioner Hager.
Commissioner Thompson.
Sorry. Um, again, KCBA Architects is a is the architect of record on this project, so I am again recusing myself from this vote this evening. I have a conflict of interest in this matter, and I will be recusing myself from any discussion, voting, or any participation at any level in anything related to this agenda item moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I should have called on you first. Um, given the lateness of the hour, my brain cells are starting to slow down. Um, so with that, um, we can now take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I jumped the gun. Any opposed? Not that I'm trying to move through the agenda or or anything, but okay, thank you. Uh, again, I'm going to take some liberties with the agenda um so that we can get, I know that there are neighbors who came out tonight to speak passionately about the issue related to the massage parlor, so I would like to move to item I under new business. And this is to consider advertising and ordinance repealing and replacing chapter one oh five Massage Establishments in its entirety. And for this, I'm going to turn to Commissioner Thompson and Solicitor Clark.
Thank you, Vice President Hager. Uh, and good evening, everyone. Over the past few months, it's come to my attention that there has been an ongoing pattern of what appears to be human trafficking and prostitution in Ward six. This behavior is occurring in the heart of residential neighborhoods and is increasingly causing concerns related to the safety of our residents, which a lot of us heard tonight. Um, previously, the township had an ordinance on the books that gave the Police Department the tools they needed to address and restrict this type of behavior. However, it was noted in twenty seventeen that the ordinance was unenforceable. Issues with unenforceability have been addressed in this latest iteration. And I would like to hear from the Solicitor this evening to tell us about what those changes are um before we move forward on this. So um Solicitor Clark, can you kind of explain the history of this ordinance a little bit more and kind of walk us through what the changes are and what we're looking at tonight?
Sure, I I certainly can, Commissioner Thompson. In um two thousand and four, the township passed an ordinance uh that addressed a licensing requirement for massage parlors within the township. Um, as part of that ordinance, applicants were required to go through a background check, background check process, and the license would be denied for prior convictions related to prostitution. Uh, the township's procedure pursuant to the two thousand and four ordinance uh prevented the issuance of a use and occupancy permit until a license had been obtained. Uh, about four years later, the state uh passed Act one eighteen, uh which took effect in two thousand and ten. And uh the legislature uh declared that su- subject to certain exceptions, um, they were laying out a licensing scheme for massage therapists and the operation of what are commonly referred to as massage parlors. Um, one of the most important aspects of of what the state passed in two thousand and eight, which went into effect in two thousand and ten, was that it stated specifically that it per it preempts and supersedes any ordinance relating to the licensure or regulation of massage therapists by a political subdivision in effect on the effective date of this section. So essentially, what the state was doing uh was that they were what is commonly referred to as preempting the field. Uh, they were going to pass an uh a law related to uh the licensing of massage therapists, and then they said, because of that, no individual municipality could have um such a a licensing uh process in place. Uh, the ordinance or the proposed The ordinance or the proposed ordinance that you have in front of you this evening for consideration for consideration does not regulate or license massage therapists as the township is expressly preempted from doing so by state law. The ordinance does require licenses for massage establishments, which is not expressly preempted by state law. The ordinance also requires for alternative massage therapists to be licensed, which is an area that has been left open by the state law. The ordinance sets forth licensing requirements as well as operational requirements, including sanitary concerns. The ordinance prohibits those with certain prior convictions from obtaining a license. The ordinance will allow township staff to enter the premises during regular business hours. And the ordinance provides penalties for failure to comply. This is not the full extent of what can be done with these entities because there are certain issues that Chief Malloy and Sergeant Fink spoke to tonight, which are the criminal code aspects of dealing with these entities. But what you have in front of you this evening, we believe is the furthest extent that Abington can go under the current state of the law in regulating these these types of businesses. Many of the issues we heard raised by residents this evening relate to violations of the criminal code. And I am certain that Chief Malloy and his staff are working very hard to address those issues. But what you're going to have tonight is what we believe is the strongest possible ordinance you can put in place regarding regulating these establishments within the township.
Thank you, Solicitor Clark.
One, one last thing, just, and again, everything is, everything is laid out with regards to the owners of the establishments and the employees of the establishment.
Thank you. And sorry for cutting you off. Chief Malloy, you want to take it from here and tell us how this ordinance can help you tackle this issue that we're having on Monroe? And give us a little bit of background on it as well.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I know years ago, we had, when Lieutenant Fink was a commander of our SIU unit, we did have an applicant who who applied for a massage parlor license and her background indicated that she had been mopped up three times for prostitution. And that's when this came to light. We denied, and I have Lieutenant Fink here, denied the application based on that. And I believe that applicant retained an attorney. And that's when we rescinded the massage parlor ordinance as it was. And as I believe it still exists in other communities around Abington. What happened then is we went from three massage parlors up to, I believe, an additional 13. Commissioner Thompson, you may have that number in front of you. But it was a significant jump that impacted our community. We, when we look at the Jaken Town Road one, I believe we had 37 complaints there in total over the last three years. The majority of those complaints came from just a few citizens. We were happy to hear from everybody tonight and realize the impact that this has had. I think that this new ordinance, as Commissioner, as Solicitor Clark is proposing, will help us in cases where we are, have people that come to start these businesses that have these backgrounds and would just prevent what we're seeing today. We, Lieutenant Fink talked about some of the investigations. I can tell you, for over 24 months, there have been joint investigations involving federal agencies and others that we did not talk about for a long time. But none of them yielded any probable cause to indicate that there was human trafficking there. Nobody, you know, cares more about the community and human trafficking and victims of sex slave than, than this Police Department and the officers who work in our Detective Division. We worked very hard in trying to bring about a conviction. And for varieties of reasons, we were not able to do that. We're going to continue to put the pressure on down there. Lieutenant Fink spoke to you earlier of how we we brought all of township staff members from Code and the Fire Marshal's Office to try to at least put a dent in this. And hopefully we can sit down with the landlord there and and see if we can get this establishment to go away once and for all.
Great. Thanks, Chief Malloy. Lieutenant Fink, did you have anything to add tonight?
Just to go along with what Chief Malloy said, in the 13 massage parlors that are now open in the township, we had 37 complaints at the one on that everybody's speaking of tonight at Jaken Town and Monroe. And we've had zero, zero complaints at the other 12 combined in that same time period. So I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that this particular establishment is in a residential neighborhood. Whereas the others are on, a lot of them are on York Road, Eastern Road, and shopping centers. Neighbors aren't observing some of the things. But we, I assure you, we have, you know, we did establish probable cause. The one gentleman said, you know, we did an investigation. We established probable cause. That's what enabled us to serve. Not only did we go out there with code enforcement, but we did serve a search warrant in that establishment tonight. And we did recover some evidence which will enable us to continue an investigation into whatever's going on there. So we haven't stopped looking into this. Hopefully with this ordinance, it'll, you know, give us the tools we need to maybe prevent this from happening again somewhere else in the township. But I can assure, if, I also heard, should we call 911 every time we see something? And my answer would be yes, please do. Please feel free to reach out to myself, to Sergeant Misbit who's investigating this case. And, you know, the more information that we get from eyewitnesses, the more it'll help us build our case.
Thanks, Lieutenant Fink.
Yep.
Commissioner Hekker, I'd like to make a motion to to move this forward to the full board. A motion to move forward ordinance. Oh. There's no ordinance nowhere yet.
Okay.
Before this ordinance, the full board, next month.
Well, I would second that motion. And I would open it up for any comments or questions from our colleagues. Commissioner Bowe.
Thanks, Vice President Hekker. I just wanted to ask a question about, it's more of clarification around the sort of process and workflow here. My understanding it that the responsibility for making sure that all establishments existing are new would be in compliance with the right licensure, that would fall to the APD. And that code enforcement would take it from there and be responsible for making sure that inspection and enforcement happened based on the code. Is that sort of the delineation of task? I'm sure you'd be working in partnership, but is that, is that an oversimplification? Or is that sort of how this would? I'm just trying to get a sense of the flow, the workflow, and what, how this will actually play out. Is that? I don't know who could best answer that.
No, I was going to defer that answer to Manager Man Freddy and then maybe the Solicitor Clark.
I would say Lieutenant Fink has a pretty good handle on that. And then the Solicitor can talk about the steps.
Okay.
And if I may, in the, in the past, the way it's worked is we've done exactly that. We've worked in tandem with code enforcement where the, the the business, the prospective business owner would go in, file an application with code enforcement. Code enforcement would bring it over to the Police Department, would have all the information on there. We would do a background check on the prospective employers, employees. Get back with code enforcement and then they would follow up on a lot of the the technicalities of the ordinance with our assistance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And if I can just jump in, and I think I've possibly called Officer Fink by several different ranks this evening. I, no, no offense, Officer Fink.
Deputy Chief by the end of the meeting.
He, he is correct that this is, the way this ordinance is written, it is essentially a, one of the township codes. So it's really the code enforcement departments first. They're the ones who are handling this. They're the ones who are in charge with all licensing within the township and all responsibility for code compliance. But they are working in tandem with the Police Department because there are issues related to background checks and other things along those lines that are handled by the Police Department. So this originally starts off with code enforcement, but they're working in tandem with the Police Department.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, let's do it.
Other comments or questions? Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. When I read this today, when I started reading it, I had questions. And then by the time I got to the end, I didn't have any questions. And I think it is a well-written ordinance that covers just about everything. I do, I do have one question. Can, can we, can the police or code enforcement go in for an inspection at any time and unannounced?
The, the ordinance gives code enforcement the ability to enter the property during regular business hours. I will say that Commissioner Myers, one of the things that we will have some ongoing conversations with Chief Malloy and his staff is regarding the police entry and some potential Fourth Amendment issues with police as opposed to code entering the building unannounced. So this is something we're, we're going to be trying to, working on to make sure that it's implemented properly. There are obviously code and criminal have different standards that have to be adhered to. So it is, it is something we're going to, once this, as we get closer to adopting this, one of the things that we'll be, we'll be talking with Chief Malloy and his command team about the implementation of this.
And one question, thank you, Mr. Clark. One question for the manager and for the, for the folks that are in on this meeting, and I'm sure they want to know that if we do pass this, and I'm sure we will, onto the board meeting, Manager Man Freddy, what, what is the advertising period? How quickly could it be truly enacted?
If you formally approve the ordinance at the June 10th meeting, the ordinance would be advertised and enacted. It will go into place at the July meeting. You'll have a hearing on it and it'll be enacted in July. And I guess the Solicitor, well, Solicitor Clark, if it's immediate or three to five days after, after the adoption.
The ordinance gives an effective date of five days after it's enacted. So five days after your July meeting, it goes into effect.
Thank you.
Solicitor Clark, do we have any leeway? Can we make it, can we enact it ASAP? Do we really have to wait to five days?
We normally write things as five days. But we can, between now and June, we'll see if there's any impediment to making this effective upon enactment.
Thank you. President Speakman?
Thank you, Vice President Hekker. Just as, and I don't know if, I don't know if the many Ward Six folks who called in know this. Commissioner Thompson has been very, you can't even say proactive. I would say aggressive and direct about advocating for not only the creation, but also the rapid adoption of this ordinance. And it's obvious, it's crystal clear why. Along those same lines, I think it's probably reasonable to make it clear to the public, you know, that obviously, just like we tell them what's coming up on upcoming agendas. We, if we make it clear to the whole community that this is something that we're going to be considering at the June Board Meeting. And obviously, there's a big, there's a big push behind it. I think that's a way to get some of these establishments, you know, as they say on blast, that there, that these, these exploitative horrific activities are not welcome here. So you know, in that, just, I think by, just by getting the word out, we can start being, being aggressive and let people know that this is, this is not going to fly here. Just a thought.
Thank you, President Speakman. Other comments or questions? We have a motion on the floor and a second. Commissioner Thompson?
Commissioner Hekker, yeah, just one more comment. I want to thank the Kucharowski family for coming out and commenting tonight, really mobilizing a lot of oursly to come out and support this ordinance and speak in favor of it. It is extremely important to the Ward Six community. It's extremely important to oursly that we get this passed and we get this problem taken care of. So I'm asking my fellow Commissioners tonight for their support and for their vote on moving this forward to the full board. Thank you.
Yeah. I would concur, Commissioner Thompson. The, the public comment tonight that we heard was some of the most impassioned public comment that I've heard during my tenure as Commissioner. And I think, you know, we would do well as you have done in taking the lead and listening to these concerns and to move as quickly as we can to get this passed. So if there are no other, no other comments or questions, we can proceed to a vote. All those in, all those in favor of moving this forward to the full board, please say aye.
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 I don't even have to ask this, but is there any opposed? No. Terrific. Well done. I'm going to maneuver around the agenda a little bit again, and then we'll get back to order. But as you heard earlier, when Kaki Evans had spoken about Agenda Item H and Manager Man Freddy, I need advice as to whether we actually need to take a vote or I can simply announce that we're pushing this to the June meeting.
I think a vote would be appropriate.
Okay. So let me just briefly describe this issue as was stated before. This subdivision application for 1231 Susquehanna Road in Riddle. Typically, we have the Environmental Advisory Committee take a detailed review and come forward with recommendations. That has not yet happened. And the committee unanimously has come to John and I asking for that opportunity. I am in agreement with that. This is in Ward One. And I, I think we should move to push this to the June meeting to allow the Environmental Advisory Committee to do its due diligence. So I'm making that motion and asking for a second.
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 Thank you. Are there any comments or questions related to that before we take the vote? Thank you. Okay. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. That has passed.
Commissioner Hekker, excuse me, this is Les. Was that a motion to go to the full board?
No, this will come back to the Committee of the Whole in June. Thank you for that clarifying question.
Thank you.
Let's see. So maybe we should just go back and try now to run through the rest of these in order. I just wanted to help us get through the agenda items. So let's go back to, well, do we want to do, Manager Man Freddy, should we do unfinished business or just move through the new business agenda?
I don't believe we hit unfinished business.
We didn't. All right. So let's go back to that. And so the unfinished business, we have one item. It's Item A. And this is a motion to remove from the table and refer LU-01-121020 Draft Rental Ordinance as considered by the Committee of the Whole on January 14th, 2021 to the Human Relations Commission for review and formal recommendation for ordinance sponsor Commissioner Thompson to schedule industry stakeholder meetings prior to any further consideration of this rental ordinance. So what we're doing here is two things. We're referring this to the HRC for their review and vetting. And we are empowering Commissioner Thompson to schedule and hold the industry stakeholder meetings that have been discussed. And Commissioner Thompson, I don't know if you'd like to comment on this.
Yeah, I think you kind of summarized it very eloquently and briefly, but that's exactly what we're trying to do. You know, there's a couple of things I want to clarify on this, this ordinance that we have in front of us tonight and kind of remind everybody what we're trying to do. First, the ordinance was designed and intended to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the tenants that occupy structures in our township. We'd like to provide some opportunity for our Fire Marshal or code enforcement officials on occasion to enter rental units, whether they be in large buildings or in the form of a single-family home or a duplex. But there is a misconception circulating via social media. But there is a misconception circulating via social media in the last couple of weeks that this ordinance proposes to have inspections occur in occupied units. This ordinance holds that common areas shall be inspected regularly as required by an ordinance 85 that we already have on the books. But Class one, two and three units, which are defined in the ordinance, which are smaller units, would be inspected every third tenant turnover, which is important to note because the unit is not occupied at the time of inspection when that occurs. Class four, five and six units would be inspected on every second, every other tenant turnover. Again, important to note because it's unoccupied at the time of inspection. It's also important to note that on every turnover, on every class of unit, the landlord is required to submit certification by a PA licensed professional that smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors and all other fire alarm, smoke alarm detection systems and sprinkler systems where applicable are in working order. On inspection, we would be looking for the same. And generally, the township would be looking to make sure that the units are warm, safe and dry. There is a glitch in the language that we will change on passing of the ordinance. And that is the intention is to do an inspection on the first tenant turnover. I think in the draft right now, we're saying within two years or on the next or on the second turnover. So we'll clean that up. Second, this evening, this ordinance seeks to address nuisance properties, which I think we've heard a lot about tonight at another location in oursly. Properties where ongoing patterns of disruption are observed, causing hardship to other tenants within the building and to the neighbors of these these properties. This product, this ordinance gives the Abington Police Department a better tool to help them do their job and address ongoing issues at locations around Abington, even in Ward six. And Chief Malloy, and I don't want to take up everybody's time too much tonight, but Chief Malloy, if you could kind of jump in and and help elaborate a little bit on what a nuisance property is and maybe talk about 501 Edge Hill Road as an example.
Sure, Commissioner, real quickly, for example, we have had chronic nuisance properties over the years that took a disproportionate number of hours, police hours, to respond to calls for service that ranged from loud noise to firearms violations to drug violations. 501 Edge Hill Road, for example, is a 36-unit apartment building that required us to respond there 145 times over two-year period. You take the other structures in Glenn Side, which are over 300 units, and we only were there 45 times. This is sort of the broken windows theory of policing applied to apartment complexes. And it really gives us a tool to to not always take enforcement action, but but to a mechanism to notify the landlord that these things are going on. This culminated, and I called Commissioner Thompson a couple of months ago, when three bad actors shot through the floor of an apartment building and it hit within six inches of a of a 10-year-old's head. And it took a little bit of time for us to lock up the suspect there. And and they were evicted. But again, if we enact this part of of the ordinance, if this is included, the chronic nuisance, it would be a way for us to put abatement mechanisms in there and and remedy things to make the quality of life better for our citizens who are in these apartment complexes.
Thanks, Chief. And those those mechanisms applied not only to prostitution, but to, you know, repeat weapons offenses or drug distribution. So I think it's important to note that because this is another tool to really give Abington Police an ability to do their job and keep our community safe. Based on landlord feedback that I've received, the nuisance property language in the draft presents some concerns as there was a comment that the language may result in racial profiling when landlords screen potential renters. We obviously don't want this. This is why it is important to get feedback from the Human Relations Commission on this topic. After we have, after we hear back from the HRC, we'll be holding a stakeholders meeting. And I want to address the term industry stakeholders was not really appropriate. Sorry for the misunderstanding there. But the goal of the meeting will be to get our further feedback on the language of the draft ordinance and make modifications as noted by landlords, tenants and adjacent landowners to these properties as we need to. I would like to add one more point. The vast majority of landlords in our community, 99.5%, if not more, are honest, law-abiding business people. And like having speed limits on a street, this ordinance will have little to no impact on their operations as long as they are in compliance with the ordinance. So again, for tonight, I I ask for your support in moving this forward to the HRC so we can further vet this language. And we'd like to have that language back before we go ahead and schedule the the roundtable discussion later on in the season. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice President Hacker?
Yes.
And then it would come back to the Committee of the Whole?
That's my understanding, right?
That's my, I would be fine with that.
Yeah, I think we want to, we want to just make sure we we get this right. This would provide an opportunity for all of us to discuss it before moving it forward to the full board.
I agree.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
I was going to say.
Thanks. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move this forward to the Human Relations Commission for review and formal recommendation and also to move forward with getting a stakeholder meeting established over the summer.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other final comments or questions? Commissioner Carswell, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, let me just.
Your actual hand, not your.
Yeah, I'm lowering the other one too, the little blue one. There it is. Okay. I had a conversation earlier this week with Commissioner Thompson because when we first started talking about this, I had two different landlords who own multiple properties in Abington Township reach out to me. They own, you know, homes within neighborhoods that maybe are townhomes or homes, but they they wanted to be a part of the conversation. And I know there was some misconception about the word industry in here, and I appreciate that. Commissioner Thompson just spoke to that. He was very open to to having them participate in that conversation, knowing that that many of our rental properties are in fact, single homes or duplexes. So I just want to say I appreciate that openness to be able to bring some people to the table who are are eager to make sure that our neighborhoods are safe, that our our residents are in safe facilities, homes, and that we're continuing to care for our residents. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carswell. Any other questions? Manager Manfredi, your your virtual hand is still up.
Yeah, I just put that up. I'll learn to lower it immediately.
Okay.
I just want to address the industry stakeholder. As you heard, you heard the Pennsylvania Associate Apartment Association, Pennsylvania Association of Realtors and other larger commercial entities have weighed in with various commissioners and and communicated with us. So the term industry stakeholders, it was meant to say include industry stakeholders, not exclude everyone else. It was the intent that they be included, not that everyone else was excluded.
Understood, and thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Bowman?
Yeah, you know, I I've been trying to, you know, comprehend this ordinance and, you know, the potential need. But when Michael just said that 99.5 are good. Well, then why are we? The perfect is the enemy of the good. So, I mean, are we trying to achieve perfection here? I don't understand. There is a landlord tenant law and there's district court. And every year, you can vote with your feet. I don't know. It's hard.
Commissioner Bowman, I'll try to respond to that. I think we heard a lot of comments tonight and a number of residents in oursly have have cited the landlord that owns the building that Ginlon Spa has been operating in. And this is, this is an instance where the landlord seems to be knowingly allowing this operation to occur and doing nothing to interfere or, you know, making no attempt to to remove the tenant. And this isn't just in this location. This can happen in apartment buildings with drug traffickers. It can happen in a single-family home with another prostitution ring. It can happen anywhere in the township. And right now, as it stands, we don't have a good, solid mechanism to deal with it. So the massage parlor ordinance gets us part of the way there because it deals specifically with massage parlors. But other nuisance properties and, you know, I, you can come over here and we can talk to the next door neighbors of 501 Edge Hill Road if you want. They needed, they needed a better tool to really enforce the law and to deal with some of these quality of life issues that affect our residents. And this is the only way I think that we can get there. And I don't know, Chief Malloy, do you have any other suggestions from dealing with issues like that? Or, you know, are we on the right track?
I I think we're on the right track only because we, with Commissioner Spiegelman back in 2015, when we were at Mount Burning Gardens Apartments, Sergeant Gillespie from Community Policing, they they convened a meeting with the managers of that complex there. And and we had a big uptick in calls for service, similar to what you're dealing with, Commissioner Thompson. And these are assaults, these are drugs, gun violations, terroristic threats, stalking, harassment. And just by sitting down with the owners and maintenance people, knowing that if you have something like this on the book, I think in that case, it turned around completely and may have sold. But I I see that this is an opportunity to to bring people to the table and say, here it is on paper. And and we get compliance and it gets the police working with the community and the elected officials to to rub this nonsense out because right now disorder begets more disorder. And that's what we have seen if we don't have some kind of a tool or mechanism to to notify them when these things are occurring.
Right, so it's a two-pronged approach in this ordinance, when we're trying to protect the community that surrounds these these rental units. And two, we're trying to protect the the tenants that live inside by going inside, making sure that the smoke detection systems work, that the sprinkler systems that are in there are functional. And at least, you know, and we're not doing this every year, Tom, that we're doing this every other tenant turnover. And, you know, if you have a tenant that lives in the unit for four years and the next guy comes in and lives there for four years, it's, it could be up to eight years, maybe longer for inspections. But it's just enough to get eyes on the units themselves and make sure that the sprinklers are working, that the that the fire alarms, the smokes are all up to stuff and functioning. And again, you know, we've modified the language in this ordinance to keep inspectors and first responders out of the units when they're they're occupied. But I still think it's important that we go in and check things as we see fit every once in a while on that interval.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson, I I think you're going to find that at the stakeholder meeting, which will probably be attended by a lot of landlords of all different sizes and some very big ones. I think that they're going to be able to share how they deal with nuisance tenants themselves. So there may be language added to this ordinance, which we don't even know about, that would be very helpful in that respect.
And thank you, Commissioner Myers. That's exactly the intent of the the roundtable discussion or the stakeholder meeting. That's the language that we're seeking. That's what we want to do. We want to make this an ordinance that works for tenants and landlords and neighboring owners in the township. This certainly isn't meant to just put a mandate on landlords. It should be a collaborative effort, and that's what we're seeking to do.
Other comments or questions from Commissioner Bowman?
Yeah, just by way of response, and Pat, Pat, I'm glad you're on there. Obviously, we had one of these in Roslyn, one of these massage houses in 10 years ago, whatever. Prominent landlord ran it right to him, no problem, in a Jiff. And I know the problems you you guys face in terms of legality. But when did the DA, is prostitution legal in Montgomery County? That's how you stop the last one. You send undercover agents in, they get offered sex, boom, there's there's arrest, that's the end.
Commissioner, can I answer that? Yeah, the the DA, despite our urging and Lieutenant Finks and I might as well address this, we we had enough probable cause to make arrests down there. We do believe that it was not human trafficking, the 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 suspects here, and and they will not prosecute. So that's where we are. It's not, I know it's the DA's county, but it's our township. And I feel that we should, we should be doing our best to at least take them into custody. And then we could work with them. We won't always have to, you know, take them for the for the full prosecution. But that's been the challenge that I wanted all the residents to know earlier. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? So you just have to refresh my memory. I know we had a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. We will now take the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We will move on. I'm going to make a request, given the lateness of the hour. I'm wondering if there would be consensus among the members of the Committee of the Whole to move Item B to next month's meeting. I think this is going to engender some discussion about the functioning of the committee in general, in addition to how we want to maneuver it moving forward. And I don't know about other members of the committee, but four hours into this tonight, I'm certainly not at my best.
Need a motion for that?
A second.
Do you need a second? Because I'm giving it to you.
Yes.
Does anybody wish to make any comments about that motion to push this to June? I know this issue is of concern to many. We're not trying to not deal with it. I just think this deserves more time than we would be prepared to give this tonight. And if there are no.
Good call, Commissioner Vice President Hacker. Thank you. Good call. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll be held voted on this. I really don't think that this item can wait. And I know, I know that everybody's tired. You know, I go back to that institutional knowledge of having meetings that went to 12:00 in the morning. I don't think that this this Item B really has to have as much conversation as one might think. It it seems pretty logical to me. And and I, I have great concern that we're not allowing comment after the agenda item has been discussed. So if if everybody can just muster up a little bit of time and maybe there's something else on the agenda that could be moved, but I think I think this is pretty important.
Commissioner Hacker, can I comment?
Of course.
Perhaps as a compromise here, I I definitely don't have any meat to soldier on on this. And I do think it will be lengthy, but perhaps we can refer to Public Affairs to be held later this month in advance in next Commissioner's meeting so that it's not delayed for final consideration.
I would be fine with that. I am not up to talking about it. I think it does take a lot of conversation. I understand your point, Commissioner Myers, but that there needs to be something done about how we're going to conduct the meetings in general. And so because of that, I think it's a much lengthier conversation, but I would be fine with it going to Public Affairs.
Yeah, my only concern about that recommendation is that I don't know that the Public Affairs Committee, which is only five of us, should have dominion over the the rules of engagement on a committee that represents all of us. That's my only concern. I don't want to delay this matter either. I mean, and I don't know, maybe we can bifurcate this. I mean, I I know that there are comments and questions out there about further refining this meeting and how we hold it. You know, is there?
Well, if it goes to Public Affairs, though, as we always did in the past, before we even started with Committee of the Whole, the committee would talk about something, come up with a recommendation, and then it would go to the full committee. People can still make comments at the Public Affairs meeting. And then it could move on to the full board. So it would have that kind of conversation, but with fresher minds dealing with it.
Yeah, I just, I understand that. I just, I I don't like in concept the idea of a subset of us voting on something that affects all of us. I mean, that was the whole point of having this meeting in the first place. But I'm one of 15. Commissioner Thompson?
Commissioner Hacker, I I agree with Commissioner Myers. I I'd rather not see us delay this thing. I thought moving it to Public Affairs was a good compromise. But if we're not going to do that, then I think we should talk about it tonight. My concern is that when we put together the policy that we're under now, we agree that the public would have five minutes to speak at the top of the the Committee of the Whole agenda. And then more items than I think we've recently been doing would end up in committee. And that would result in more speaking time for the residents to comment on them in committee before moving on to the Board of Commissioners. It just hasn't happened. And, you know, I do agree with some of the criticism that residents really haven't had the time to speak to some of these these agenda items. And I I think that I think it's important that we that we hear this out. And if it's not tonight, then I do think that a committee meeting at the beginning of next month would be appropriate. But I I'd rather not see this push out for another month or two.
Well, it seems to, so I understand that perspective, and I'm not interested in in delaying it for for those reasons as well. I I just think in hearing from some of my colleagues, both directly and indirectly, there's more to this than the specific agenda item. And it's more about concerns about how the Committee of the Whole is functioning vis-à-vis the committees. We could have that separate conversation if people were interested in having a brief conversation about whether we want the Committee of the Whole to function like the other committees and have three minutes per agenda item, regardless of what we do with referral patterns back to committee or forward to the full board. But I think, you know, you saw this evening, I mean, you know, But I think, you know, you saw this evening, I mean, you know, we don't have, I mean, typically the ordinance that we talked about with the massage parlors would have gotten full vetting at Public Safety Committee. And we're not, we didn't want to do that because of the timing involved, so I I think there's a broader discussion there and I guess the question to my colleagues is. Are we willing to separate out this issue from what it appears to be a broader discussion that people want to have? So that we don't delay the matter of public participation in this meeting.
I would be okay with us separating this issue out, I think the issue of public comment is is important and it's first and foremost for us. We can talk about the mechanisms and the and the format of the committee of the whole, um, at the next committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, I have to say.
I think they need to be discussed together.
I'm sorry.
Well.
I don't know how you separate them out, so, um, because they kind of flow into each other, so I I don't get it, now you're just. I mean, I'm just getting confused now at what we're trying to do.
Well, I.
Time may.
Commissioner Schreiber, and I mean, clearly, I mean, I I think you have a perspective on this, you know, about the committee of the whole that may be shared by others. And I think we need a more detailed discussion about what the role of the committee of the whole is moving forward, what we're suggesting here is. A specific change to allow for additional public participation in this meeting. And and I I I don't know that they didn't have to flow into one another, I mean, this this is about ensuring. Um, that people have the opportunity to comment uh, after the agenda, you know, as the agenda items come up as opposed to before there's any discussion and I. I'm not sure why we would be opposed to that.
I agree, I read this agenda item as a relatively simple matter of, you know, allowing for three minutes of speaking time after each agenda item. I didn't realize we're gonna have a larger discussion about the committee of the whole.
I didn't either, I just got that.
I agree with it, but I uh, to me, this is a simple motion to allow three minutes of speaking time after each agenda.
Are we taking off the five minutes at the beginning and the presentations and things like that? Or and are we making this more of like a committee where?
The intent behind this agenda item would be to replace the five minutes at the beginning where people are commenting on agenda items without having the benefit of hearing us speak. And replacing that with three minutes uh, after each agenda item, uh, because there has been feedback from the public that they would like to make more informed comments based on our discussion.
Commissioner Hacker, man, can I say something?
You certainly can, Manager Manfredi.
To answer Commissioner Schreiber's question directly. The committee of the whole was set up with five minutes at the beginning, was set up the way it was with public comment. Based on individual commissioners' comments and the idea was that it would come to the committee of the whole. It would be heard because there are many, many people, I shouldn't say many, there were several commissioners. Who felt that it was important to hear everything at the same time with everyone rather than going to committee first. The missing piece was that while everything was coming into committee of the whole. It would, it was as if it were the committee. With the exception that the public lost the opportunity to comment after each agenda item. So what was, what is happening is the committee of the whole, where all of you always did as committee members. Were having robust conversation and discussion and deciding you were okay with it being voted on the following month. By doing that, it wasn't going to committee. And the public wasn't getting the public comment after every three minutes, so what this suggestion was meant to cure was just that. That if you wanted to have robust discussion. At at this meeting, as you did at the committee meetings and uh, voted through because you vetted it. It would, it would then afford the public to have their three minutes that they used to have when it was at committee. It's that that's the the simplest way to describe this, and so what that would do is that would leave everything else in place except for. Um, making it three minutes after each agenda item. There would still be presentations if if you wanted them. Um, there would not be the public comment as as it was before. The five minutes would be gone and replaced with three minutes after every agenda item. Does that answer your question?
Not really, but thank you, I mean, it, yeah, I understand exactly what you said. And I guess we are having this discussion now tonight, so I will continue on this then. So if we are gonna, I'm not opposed to to people making comments, I think that's great if people make comments after every agenda item. But then I guess my question is, why do we have this and then have things go possibly to public? To all the um, committee meetings because essentially this is the committee meeting then. If everybody's gonna make all of their comments and everybody's going to have a discussion about all those comments on each thing. That is the committee, which is fine if we decide to go that, that's why I'm saying these things are not, they they are intermixed. Having that conversation, so um. Because that's what happened at the committee meetings. Right?
You are correct.
Yeah.
Vice President Hacker?
Yes, Commissioner Myers.
This, this, this is a committee. And none of us truly understood it was a very new, new program for us to complete, something we'd never done before. And we said in the beginning that if in any way that this needed tweaking or wasn't working, that we would go back and look at it. It has been my experience that very little is going to to committee meetings, to individual committee meetings. Uh, looks like to me just about land development, not a whole lot more, and that's okay. But everyone should have the ability to have their three minutes to the specific agenda item. And I think that's all we're doing here, and if you're removing, we're removing them five minutes at the at the beginning, that's fine. Because they're getting three minutes to the specific agenda item. I I I think we're trying, we're making it more complicated than it is. It's, there are going to be less individual committee meetings and but this is a committee meeting.
Understood, thank you, Commissioner Myers, President Spiegelman?
Uh, thank you, Vice President Hacker, it's it's not lost on me or I think on anyone. Um, the fact that this this particular committee of the whole meeting uh, began with something like an hour. If I my calculations are correct, an hour and a half of 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 public comment, which I thought was very uh, impassioned and 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 robust. Um. I think I I I do concur with a lot of my, a lot of our colleagues that. Uh, since the inception of the committee of the whole, oh, uh, there haven't been as many things as expected that have gone to committee. Um, I think a lot of that is circumstantial, I think in the earlier days of the committee of the whole, which featured many meetings. Uh, probably they're gonna end up being shorter than this one, but they were quite long, three hour, you know, three hour meetings. Uh, there, I I think a lot of the uh, conversation that normally would have happened or in the past would have happened at committee. Ended up happening at committee of the whole, so it did get the the robust intensive vetting. Um, I think that, uh, I think frankly, there've been, we we've had various items that they haven't been sent to committee. But they haven't automatically been blasted right to the to the full board meeting, they've been sent, uh, they've been sent, you know, like the um. Uh, uh, well, I mean, like, like, like Penn State tonight, Penn State, you know, it it's going to to neighborhood meetings. The rental ordinance is gonna go to uh, to 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 stakeholder meetings and the HRC. And then I think there've been, there have been, oh, there've been a lot of matters that did, that got the. Attention and and discussion that they needed, but really didn't necessarily need to go to committee, those were matters that in the past, they would have come up in committee, there would have been a very short discussion. They would have been voted on and uh, then they they would have moved on, um, so there, I don't think there's that much difference. I do think there is a lot coming down the pike that is going to end up going to committee, so I don't think that. Uh, I I guess I said, I think it's circumstantial that uh, that it looked, that committee of the whole has sort of replaced committees, committees. Are are still a thing, I I do think we're gonna see more of them, so that's my two cents.
Commissioner Vaughn, thank, oh, first of all, thank you, President Spiegelman, Commissioner Vaughn?
Um, I just, me personally, I feel like. Having every resident comment for three minutes on every item. Seems very long, a very long night to me, to someone that has to get up at five in the morning to go to work. Um, so I guess my question would be, are we limiting the amount of call, like, will there be a exact number of residents that we are going to? Have um, be able to speak for each item, like, will it be, there's allowed five residents per item to speak three minutes? Or are we gonna have the same people speaking for three minutes on every topic that we bring up? Because that could be an extremely long evening, I'm just wondering if there's going to be some type of parameter set on how many people? Or how many residents um, that we are allowing to have a few minutes if it's every item?
We actually cannot uh, limit the number of people that want to speak about um, any given item and stay in compliance with the sunshine law. So if somebody wants to speak, we can limit their comments to the agenda item per se, because that that's that's the focus of the matter before us. But we can't decide arbitrarily that five people get to speak about this or three people get to speak about this, we are obligated to take public comment by anybody who wishes to offer it.
I am all for that, I just think it should be three minutes total, not three minutes per item.
Well, thank you for your perspective, Commissioner Bo.
I think this is important enough regardless of whether its enactment ends up having downstream effects on. The overall structure of the committee of the whole. That we uh, move it along to the full board, I think it's um. It's a very logical next step, I think it brings a little more structure, I think it is empowering to people who. Wants to hear us talk and then reflect on that, um. I understand that it can potentially have the effect of. Further dis- disempower, seeming to further disempower the um. The work of the actual committees because it brings the structure of the committee of the whole and in alignment with what the committees themselves look like. Um, I'm willing to deal with a temporary. Discomfort there with this looking like, just like those committee meetings. Um, for the sake of uh, further refining the structure. So that people have the opportunity to speak uh, in the right order, so I. I don't know if there's a motion on the floor at the appropriate time, I'd be willing to make a motion to. Uh, move this to the full board for a vote.
We're gonna have to get clarity because um, at the outset of the discussion, there there may have been something.
I think there is a motion.
And but we we deviated considerably from that, I would just ask my colleagues to consider, I mean, I think. We can make and continue to make whatever tweaks we need to make to this, but I thought as an example, tonight's discussion about the massage parlor ordinance was robust and important. And there wasn't one of us that thought we should send this back to the Public Safety Committee, although this is one of the biggest public safety issues facing the township. So I would say this is, that's an example where this mechanism has worked. A considerable work was put in, everybody who wanted to weigh in had a chance to weigh in. And we, there was unanimous agreement to move this forward ASAP so that we can get this on the books. So I I I think it can work both ways and if there are concerns about utilization of the committees in a different format, we should have that discussion. I mean, what we want in the end is as good a product for the residents of this township as we can produce. And if there are ways to do that, that we're not currently utilizing, then we should put our heads together and do that. And I'm happy, I I'm more than willing to have any discussion, both individually, as a group, in the context of this meeting to get us to that place.
Mr. Hacker, uh, if I may ask a question, Ms. Vile, was there a motion?
No, I don't believe so.
I did not think so either, so sir, if Commissioner Bo wanted to make a motion, Commissioner Hacker.
Okay, well, there was no motion. Commissioner Bo will just hold for one second, I s- I know Commissioner Carswell wants to make a comment. You're on mute, Commissioner Carswell.
There we go, sorry, I thought that you, Commissioner Hacker, I thought that you had made the motion to move this.
I made a recommendation, I I did not.
Forgive me, that's what I thought I was seconding, because I I am exhausted, this has been a very long day. And I think this is an incredibly important conversation, I don't, I I think that. We're all trying to accomplish a couple of things that are actually rowing in the same direction. Um, I don't think that at ten thirty at night when we still have six, seven items left to accomplish. That we're able to give our best to this. I I wanna see more chance for public comment, I wanna try and help our residents better navigate our meetings. Um, but I also want us to not have agendas that are this long, I I feel like in twenty twenty, we lost a lot of opportunity. To accomplish some of the things that we're doing now and this meeting is so long because this is how long the agenda is. After a previous meeting, after a previous executive session, so I think, I think we need to do ourselves, um. We're all volunteers here with the exception of the township staff, but they also come to work tomorrow. I think we need to do a little bit better job of managing our our workflow so that we can. Use committees appropriately and get work done and not not face this bottleneck. Tonight, we had a really important conversation and a lot of residents turned out for it. Any other given meeting, we might have one resident turn out, so it can be very lopsided and where we can anticipate that. And try and avoid having four or five hour meetings, I mean, I miss you all, but I don't really want to spend. Half a day with you on on Zoom, I think we need to get that piece under control.
So I I understand and I think there is an ebb and flow to this, um, what I would point out is that the agenda that we've condensed into the committee of the whole. Would have played out exactly in this fashion over four separate committee meetings that we all would have been present for playing musical chairs, so. I don't, I mean, other than stacking it on top of the board meeting, I don't think this format creates longer length, it just feels different because of the way we're going about it.
I I concur with you, I just, I think we have a a long agenda tonight and that's.
We do.
Waying into this whole conversation.
Understood.
I I have a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Zappone.
Uh, you know, I I I think to resolve some of this confusion. We need to go back to our regular committee meetings on Tuesday night in person in the township like we had for years. Uh, when is that gonna happen? I mean, you know, it's almost quarter of eleven at night. Wh- wh- when is this gonna happen, when we're gonna get back in that building and conduct business in the building for the residents? Uh, when is that gonna happen?
Well, I think we have been following public health guidance, which now has shifted again today and as we've been in this meeting. Um, following the CDC recommendations that were issued earlier today, Pennsylvania has revised its mask wearing guidelines. Uh, and so I think we're gonna need to be in consultation with the manager, the solicitor, uh, emergency management coordinator. And figure out what the game plan is for how we conduct business moving forward in this, you know, environment of evolving public health recommendations. Uh, prior to today, we could not actually be in that building in the boardroom and follow CDC guidelines appropriately.
Now, I I do understand that, but from what I'm hearing, the end of this month, everything's supposed to to go back to normal. Other than the mask wear, and then they also said about the mask wearing, if you're fully vaccinated. Uh, you don't have to wear a mask inside or outside, that was on CDC, uh, a report today that I read.
That's correct, Commissioner Zappone, actually.
Maybe by June, I I don't know, I I'm just.
I think we're gonna need to get guidance at the state level, uh, and then figure out the implications for how we as a group conduct our business moving forward. I mean, clearly, if there are no prohibitions against doing what we did previously, then I would imagine that we would figure out how to evolve back to that in a safe manner.
Okay, alrighty.
Commissioner Hacker?
Uh, I'm sorry, who is that?
It's Stuart.
Oh, Commissioner Weinberg, sorry.
Um, I think tonight shows us that the current rules, speaking rules work. Um, that it gets, it gets vetted, we hear from residents, things are getting vetted here, if things need to move on uh, to specific committees, they'll get there. Uh, but we're looking at the length of tonight's meeting and looking at all the, to hear everybody speak. Uh, all the residents speak specifically, and I think it shows that it works. Um, I think we really do need a robust discussion about this, um, and I think it should stay with the committee of the whole. I do think I've um, listened to Commissioner Carswell and to you, it is late. And I think that, you know, we're all getting a little tired, we're starting to get off topic as well. Um, and I think that we should bring this, I would like to see it brought back to the next committee of the whole. For not, for a vetting and quite frankly, we can hear from other residents as well, because they'll be there to uh, to speak at the beginning of the meeting. So, um, again, I want to stay on topic here, but I think it's really, I think it's a really important topic that all of us should be here for and not just committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Weinberg. Commissioner Vaughn, do you have your hand up again?
No, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just wanted to be clear. Okay, so we've run through quite a bit of discussion. We actually do not, in fact, have a motion on the floor. We can certainly entertain motions from commissioners to take action on this in several ways, and the floor is open for that consideration. Commissioner Spiegelman, President Spiegelman.
I don't even know at this late hour. Well, I then would like to make a motion that we continue discussion of this matter to the June committee of the whole meeting.
I second.
Okay, this has been moved and seconded. If are there any further questions before we vote? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Okay, I think that was two opposed.
Commissioner Myers and who else opposed?
Commissioner
Commissioner Thompson.
Oh, Commissioner Thompson.
Okay.
And Vahe.
And Vahe, okay.
Three opposed. Thank you. We will move to item C, which is to consider approving the stipulation to settle the matter of Noble Town Center versus the Montgomery Assessment Appeals et al. And authorizing Whistler Pearlstein to sign the stipulation on behalf of the township of Abington. And for this, I'm going to turn to Ms. Waymire.
Thank you, Vice President Hacker. For this, the school district, the county have approved to for the settlement. And what we're asking of the commissioners tonight is to approve Whistler Pearlstein to sign the stipulation on behalf of the township with the assessment appeal for the Noble Town Center.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from my colleagues? Okay, hearing none. We will entertain motion. A motion? Commissioner Spiegelman?
I move that we approve the stipulation to settle the matter of Noble Town Center versus the Montgomery Assessment Appeals at Al. And we authorize Whistler Pearlstein to sign the stipulation on behalf of the township of Abington, and I so move.
Second.
Shouldn't the motion be to referral to the board?
Oh. Commissioner Weinberg is correct. I messed that up.
I was Commissioner Vahe.
Oh, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Vahe. Commissioner Vahe, do you want to do it? Do you want to do it right? I screwed it up.
No.
I feel a bit. All right. I move that we we move this matter of the Noble Town Center assessment settlement to the full board, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments or questions before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Item E, this is to consider approving a traffic signal maintenance agreement between the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Department of Transportation, the Township of Abington for Old York Road and Rodman Avenue, and for Old York Road and Beta Road, Hilltop Road, adopting a resolution authorizing the township manager to sign accordingly. And for this, we have Mr. Jones.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'll make this quick. We currently have maintenance agreements for every signalized intersection in our township. We conduct annual inspections on these permitted intersections, and we make repairs on any deficiencies that are found. At the listed intersections, we will be improving the crosswalks and adding audible signals for the hearing impaired. So by considering the approval of this agreement, we will be adding the improvements to the permits and agreeing to maintain the updates.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there any questions for him? Hearing none, we will entertain a motion.
Motion.
We have to be a little bit more specific than that.
Someone else do it.
Okay, then I'm going to make the motion. Go ahead, somebody.
I would be glad to make the motion to approve a traffic signal maintenance agreement between the Commonwealth Department of Transportation and Township of Abington, and I so move.
And this would be moving it for to the full board for approval.
To the full board for approval.
Yep.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Item F, this is for us to consider and discuss the release of escrow number one on the land development LD-18-05 Metaplex Abington Project located at 1137 to 1151 Old York Road in the amount of $532,955.25. And for this, we will turn to Mr. Hassan.
Thank you, Vice President Hacker. The on the agenda for your consideration tonight is the escrow release number one for this land development project 18-05 for Metaplex. Per our review letter dated dated April 1, 2021, the improvements requested under this release have been completed, and we confirm them in the field to have been completed for the approved plan. And therefore, it is ready for your action tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan. Any comments or questions? If not, we will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to move the release of escrow number one on the land development of LD-18-05 to the full board next month.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? And Manager Manfred kindly texted me offline to inform me that I skipped item D. And so we'll go back to item D. This is to consider approving the stipulation to settle the matter of Hillside Cemetery versus the Montgomery Assessment Appeals et al. And authorizing Whistler Pearlstein to sign the stipulation on behalf of the township of Abington. And again, we'll turn to Ms. Waymire.
Thank you, Vice President Hacker. Very similar to item C, although this one deals with Hillside Cemetery. The school district and the county have both also approved this. We're seeking approval tonight from the board to approve the Whistler Pearlstein signing the stipulation agreement on behalf of the township.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for Ms. Waymire? Commissioner Bowman, did you have your hand up?
Just to make a motion to send this to the full board for approval in the consent agenda at next month's meeting.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? We will now move forward to item G, which is to consider and discuss the release of escrow number one on the subdivision 1768 Kimball Avenue in the amount of $10,750. And again, I will turn to Mr. Hassan.
Thank you, Vice President Hacker. Again, on the agenda before you tonight for your consideration is escrow release number one in the amount of $10,750 per our review letter dated April 16. Again, the improvements requested under this release have been confirmed in the field, and they were installed for the approved plan, and it is ready for your action tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan. Do we have any comments or questions? Commissioner Bowman, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we pass this item G on to the full board for next month's meeting and approval by the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. We will now move to our final agenda item for this evening. This is item J, and this is to consider and discuss expanding the Emancipation Day holiday for all employees. And for this, we will turn to President Spiegelman.
Thank you, Vice President Hacker. I'll make this quick by turning to to Manager Manfred for an explanation. This is basically just an issue of timing because of the contracts with with the union versus non-union employees. So Manager Manfred, if you could, you could kindly explain to everybody.
Sure. Thank you, President Spiegelman. As you may recall, I believe it was September, October of last year, after the two union contracts were settled, Commissioner Spiegelman proposed Emancipation Day as a holiday for the revised personnel policy. As contracts are agreed to, especially the per-union contract, often changes are made to the non-uniform or non non-union policies to reflect some of those changes that were negotiated. One of the things that was added to the the township policies for non-union members was the Emancipation Day. Now that that Emancipation Day is near, there are questions, for example, in the Public Works Department, you have union members who do not have Emancipation Day as a holiday, but their managers and supervisors do. The police contract was also resolved without that being a holiday in it. So when I raise this question to the sponsor of that being President Spiegelman, he thought it was appropriate for all employees to have and observe Emancipation Day. In order to do that, you would have to enact a motion authorizing side letters to those agreements to grant that holiday to those members. Obviously, as you all know, with negotiated contracts, this was not something that was negotiated, but would certainly have to be talked with. The expectation is in my conversations with with both departments. It's just a matter of how, for example, in public works, would you have people working in refuse, for example, and their supervisors be off? There are greater impacts, of course, with respect to police, because as you know, they're on the road 24/7. There are other contract implications. But this comes down to a matter of whether or not you want all employees to observe that holiday. And I think that was the point that Commissioner Spiegelman was trying to make when he wanted to sponsor this originally and again here this evening.
Thank you, Manager Manfred.
Speaker. And yeah, that's that's perfect. And I mean, for those who don't know, Emancipation Day, the holiday refers to Juneteenth, June 19.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Commissioner Bowman?
I'd make a motion to to table this matter for further discussion at a future date because I'm not getting into a discussion about this now. There's too many loose ends that I just heard about various employees in various departments. That's not a topic for 11 o'clock at night.
So there's a motion that has been made. Is there a second to that motion?
Can you repeat the motion?
I'm making a motion to table this matter for further discussion at the next committee of the whole meeting.
I just, if I could point out, and Manager Manfred, correct me if I'm if I'm wrong on this, but if if that were, if if this weren't discussed until the next committee of the whole meeting, then it would be adopted until July, and that that would mean that we would have this we would, right, we would have this situation where we had this this split holiday among some employees and not others. Is that correct? Am I correct in that, Manager Manfred?
Yes, I would have to have discussions with representatives of both unions to ask them how they want to handle that because the change would not occur until after the holiday. If you if you if you move it back a month, the June 19 holiday is will have expired by the time you actually vote the policy to grant the authority for for everyone else to have that day.
This is Commissioner Rothman. I didn't follow that what you just said there, Rich. We have a meeting before the 19th, right?
But the meeting, so so at the next meeting, the committee would consider whether or not to take further action. You wouldn't be adopting take final action. The final action wouldn't come until July.
Right.
Final action needs to be in advance of June 19.
Are we able to to somehow? I'm trying to to understand, I mean, to follow what what Commissioner Bowman's saying is, I agree that there might be some further detail that we're not getting right at the moment, or questions or conversations need to happen with unions. But is there a way to try to get this so that we can vote for it if we have all the information before then at that commissioners' meeting, not the committee of the whole on on June? I don't have my calendar for me. 11th.
Your 10th.
What the issue, what the issue becomes is this becomes an issue of cost, cost and an additional benefit that wasn't negotiated. Now, would we have ended up there anyway? You know, perhaps, but it becomes a matter of cost. And again, it was a, it's a, it's a benefit that wasn't negotiated. You know, there will be a cost to the holiday for the police department to to have that holiday. There'll be a cost for public works to have that as a holiday. That's really the the primary driver at this point. Operations obviously would have to be adjusted, just as it is on every other holiday for every other non-uniform, meaning police employee.
Yeah, for the record, I'm in favor of us honoring that day. I just, it sounds like there's a bunch of moving parts, and I'm sort of trying to be sensitive to to even, Rich, you and the staff figuring out what the implications are. While we don't have necessarily all those dollars and cents in front of us.
So we're not talking about taking away a holiday, is that right? And putting another one in its place? Do I have that right?
Correct. This would be adding a holiday.
But not, okay. I'm just asking because the county switched up one, like added that holiday but took away another. So I wanted to make sure that's not what we were talking about.
You are correct.
Vice President Hacker?
Yes.
If I if I may, this I guess connects with a conversation we had before. A way to have this, to have a drill down discussion on this and still have the possibility of it making it to next month's board meeting would be to send this to, I believe it would be Public Affairs.
That I believe that's correct.
I am amenable to that. Commissioner Bowman, you happen to chair Public Affairs. Are you amenable to that?
That's fine.
Thank you both. Commissioner Carswell has been waiting patiently.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just want to make sure we
Okay.
Long as we're all still patient at this hour of the night. Listen, I would like to make a motion that we move this item forward to the Public Affairs Committee so that it can be discussed and fully vetted out with the township staff and figuring out the calendar, the costs and other moving pieces of that.
Second.
Wait, there already is a motion on the table.
It was not seconded.
Yep.
All right, that we got through that procedure.
Commissioner Bowman initially tried to table it, but no one seconded that.
I wasn't sure if we finished procedure on that.
Yeah, they never got a second.
Correct.
But I seconded Commissioner Carswell's motion.
So now we have a motion on the floor to refer this to the June meeting of the Public Affairs Committee. There's a second. So are there additional comments or questions from my colleagues before we take a vote? Commissioner Myers?
It's not a question about this item, but if this motion passes and we're having a public affairs meeting, can we go back and revisit item B? Because we're already having now, if this passes, a public affairs meeting. And why not have two items on that meeting instead of one?
Well, that motion has already been passed and approved. I mean, I don't know what the rules of procedure call for revisiting something that's already been approved by the committee.
Manager Manfred, is that allowable?
If you want to reconsider an issue that was already voted, you certainly can put forth a motion to reconsider what you had already done and change its course. I believe that would be appropriate if you wanted to do that.
I'm I'm just saying logically, if we're having a meeting.
And I thought I heard, what I heard, and it really comes down to the board members, in particular Commissioner Hacker, it said that, and others, it said that they wanted everyone to discuss this at the at the committee of the whole rather than sending it to a committee.
Everyone, everyone is permitted to attend the committee meeting.
Yes, but there's only five voting members. Yes, but there's only five voting members.
If it involves the Committee of the Whole, everybody should, should be able to, to, I think that's, I think that's the fair thing to do.
All right. I, I had to try.
Understood. So we have a motion on the floor with a second. Are there any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Uh, is there any opposed? That concludes the formal agenda for the evening, and, uh, we are now adjourned. Thank you.
Good work, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Good night.
Hi, everybody. I'm really excited to announce that the Roslyn Pet Fair is back. So we missed last year, and, um, that was the first time in 15 years that we've missed having it, and so we're back this year. It is a free event, and we are changing the location this year so that we can have, um, social distancing. So the date is Saturday, June the 12th. The times are from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and we're now going to be located at Salem Baptist Church. So the address is 2741 Woodland Road in Roslyn. Um, it is a, uh, pet friendly event, so you can bring animals if they're well behaved and leashed. And, um, we, like I said, we are socially distancing. We are wearing masks at this event. If anybody might be interested in being a vendor, whether you're with a rescue or, um, have products for sale that are animal related, you can contact us at roslinpetfair@gmail.com. So it's all one word, Roslyn Pet Fair, and then at gmail.com. Again, just to repeat the date, it's Saturday, June 12th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Set of time would start at nine. Email us if you have any questions. We also have the Facebook page for the Roslyn Pet Fair, so look us, look for us there. And, uh, hope to see a lot of the public out there. Just to give you an idea of what we will have, there's going to be pet rescues, uh, some meet and greets for animals. We will have, um, pet products and crafts for sale, and the Abington Police Department will be providing some refreshments. Hope to see you on Saturday, June the 12th. Thanks a lot.